All right, good evening, everyone. I hope everybody's well.
Good evening.
Town Council meeting on Monday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, remote meeting of the Southbridge Town Council. Reading first, pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, order suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and Governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress, do so by watch such access channel one ninety-two or by remote participation noted below. We will post the record of the meeting on the town's website at www.c i dot southbridge dot m a dot U S as soon as we are able. Reminder there, roll call voters required for all votes taken under this order. Please excuse me, my allergies are kicking in. At this time, I'd ask you all to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. If Council Marquette, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. Roll call, man, sector.
Council Adams.
Present.
Council Katrona.
Present.
Council Daniel.
Present.
Council Jovan.
Present.
Council Lazo.
Present.
Council Manna.
Present.
Council Marquette.
Present.
Council Nash.
Present.
And Council Steves.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a corner. Agenda item three A. Hopefully, we can get through these, and they're all here. Considering except the town council minutes of Monday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion by Council Katrona, seconded by Council Daniel. Are there any errors, corrections, or admissions from anyone? Council Adams.
Mr. Chair, you want agenda item number five, should state the curbside meeting will go on May second, said May fifth. And on Charlie, let's see, on the second page, under the same agenda item number five, under C, emergency operations center, should say P P E. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Council Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item three, under the vote by roll call, it notes after Steve's by seven to one, the motion carries, it's incorrect due to Council Manna abstaining, I think that should read seven, zero, one, and space out V. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have that, Mary?
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other errors, corrections, or admissions? Okay, everybody has a camera on, so I'm taking a look. It's, man, okay. All right, seeing none, roll call.
Council Adams.
Yes.
Council Katrona.
Yes.
Council Daniel.
Yes.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Marquette.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
And Council Steves.
Yes.
And again, the record will reflect as amended. I should have said as amended. Item three B, considering except the town council minutes of Monday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Council Katrona, seconded by Council Steves. Any errors, corrections, or admissions? Council Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be abstaining because I was not at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. I was at this meeting. I'm sorry. I take that back. It's the next one.
Okay. Council Marquette.
I have a headache.
Oh, yes. On agenda item number fifteen, I voted no.
Catch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other errors, corrections, or admissions? It's, and then all those, roll call to accept those minutes as amended with that one correction.
Council Katrona.
Yes.
Council Daniel.
Yes.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
I put it here on my computer.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Marquette.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council Steves.
Yes.
And Council Adams.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda three C, considering the whole minutes Thursday, May seventh, two thousand and twenty, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Council Katrona, seconded by Council Nash, Council Manna.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I will be abstaining from this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other errors, corrections, or admissions? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Daniel.
Yes.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Abstained.
Council Marquette.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council Steves.
Yes.
Council Adams.
Yes.
And Council Katrona.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item three D, considering except the special town council minutes of Monday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Council Katrona, seconded by Council Daniel. Any errors, corrections, or admissions? Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Marquette.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council Steves.
Yes.
Council Adams.
Yes.
Council Katrona.
Yes.
Council Daniel.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Subcommittee reports. I don't think any subcommittees have met. I'm starting, we're going to have to have some kind of subcommittee meetings just to accept minutes of the budget hearings and any other minutes. Hopefully, we had guidance from the governor as to when we can ease up on some of the restrictions to have a larger gathering than ten people. So I'll go through the list. I haven't had a meeting, but I have to report. Nothing's good.
Thank you, Chairman. Just so you know, your audio is pretty poor off and on.
I turn my head, I have to make sure I look forward. Council Adams tells me that all the time. It's where I keep my paperwork. Thank you.
No problem, sir. Nothing new to report. We'll work on scheduling a meeting for minutes. Indeed, that was my note tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Human Services Council allows us to absent, but we'll have to see about scheduling meeting for those purposes. Plan Development, Council Adams.
Just have to schedule a subcommittee meeting for, I think, I have two meeting minutes, budget and one prior to that. I've gotten that. Thank you.
Thank you. Protection of persons and property, Council Manager.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Thank you through you. No meetings and no minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Special Committee Reports, Curbside Advisory Committee, Council Adams.
So nothing has changed from the last time we, I gave the brief. We have a meeting on June second at three P M remotely.
Thank you. Excuse me. Town Manager Search Committee, Council Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a meeting scheduled for June eleventh, tentatively, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. COVID nineteen Public Health and Safety Briefing Update. I just add, we did not have an emergency operations center meeting this week. As of today, we held off till tomorrow due to the awaiting the governor's guidance on days one, two, three, and four. I think everything else is pretty, going on pretty steadily, but I know Chief Woodson is here. Chief Woodson, do you have anything that you'd like to add at this time?
Those are all set. We'll see you guys tomorrow morning at nine A M.
Okay. Mr. Pelletier is on the line. Andy, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I am all set. Again, I will report in tomorrow.
Okay. Again, I'd like to thank all the town officials, chiefs, for the leadership during this pandemic. I think we managed it pretty well. Regrettably, we did have five deaths in town, which is sad, but hopefully, we're coming towards the downside of this pandemic and something that we've been very, done a very good job of managing. And hopefully, we can get to some semblance of normal activities. I don't like using the term new normal, but something that's a little more day-to-day. I'm sure the town manager will have something to add in his interest.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Council Marquette.
I have, some residents have asked me for, if, if we could get some clarification on the, on the data that's being reported. I think they want to know specifically, are, are residents who are out of town but are at Harrington Hospital, are they counted in the data? If a resident of Southbridge goes to Worcester, are they counted in the data? Is the nursing home being counted? These are just some of the questions that some residents have asked me to pursue. I'm sure, you know, they may not want to have an answer tonight, but if you could discuss it tomorrow morning, I would appreciate it.
Um, no, I think we can, we, we work very hard on those numbers. Council Adams is, is always working through the health department to make sure that we have accurate numbers. I go to Andy to answer any questions on that, but we have had discussions about what gets counted, how it gets counted, and the nursing home and all that, but Andy.
If you want me to weigh in, I can real quick.
Yes, please.
We currently have ninety-eight cases, a total of ninety-eight cases in town. Forty-one of them are still active. A large number of them are at the rehab center. We had a cluster incident at the rehab center. The only cases that get reported in Southbridge are those with a residence in Southbridge. So if you are, if you are spending time at a nursing home in Worcester, but your address hasn't been changed, then you are reported as a Southbridge resident. So the reports we do are only on people who are, by census, by, by address from Southbridge.
Thank you. Does that clarify, does that clarify it? Okay.
That's for me.
All right, thank you. Chairman's announcements, just the two announcements that I have, it's just a reminder to the fellow councils and the public. On May twenty-eighth, which is next Thursday evening, we have several public hearings, one on the capital improvement plan, and one on the budget hearing, which will then follow with a special town council meeting for the adoption of the budget. That needs to be, all those activities need to be completed by the end of the eleventh month. So we're up against that on the eleventh month. We're working, I know the town manager's office and the county office are working very hard to give us good budget numbers. It's still a struggle and a moving pin. So we'll see how that goes on May twenty-eighth. On June first, two thousand and nineteen, we will also have a special town council meeting relative to a presentation with Franklin Realty on some plans that they want to discuss with the town of Southbridge officials. So that'll be on June first. And lastly, again, and I'm sure Council Adams will probably do this, and his announcements as well, reminded that the Memorial Day Parade has been canceled, the parade itself, there will be some activities, but I'll leave that to Council Adams during his presentation to discuss that. Council Katrona, I saw your hand. Did you have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, through you, and I thank you for the time. The May twenty-eighth public hearing, will we be back at the dais in full council?
I would doubt that. I don't think we have enough guidance from that to be able to do that. So it'll be a public hearing. There would be no public that would be allowed to come in anyway, because it still would be gatherings of not greater than ten people. And we are. Do you have a question, Council Katrona?
Yes, I do. The, the, the council itself, as far as meeting in full session at the, at the dais, we, we can't meet? Is that what you're saying? Because of the public order?
There's no gatherings of greater than ten. There's nine councils, there's a secretary, there's a town manager, there's the cable access people. That would put us above ten people.
Okay, I guess it's open for interpretation.
Unless you have got, unless you have guidance, I'm not interpreting anything. I'm going by what the governor has stated. So unless you have something that's different, then please forward that to me. Council Steves?
Um, yeah, just one thing. I think according to the governor's order, actually, town legislative bodies are exempt from that, that restriction. So technically, we could meet in person if we wanted to. I might consider issues with a whole bunch of other people in the audience, a whole bunch of like town, other town officials might be an issue, but we could meet if we wanted to. Um, also, since you're, also, I wanted to ask, since you did mention the budget issues, I don't know if Ron plans on bringing this up during his, his discussion in a moment, but do we have anything more on this, the state of what we're likely to be getting going forward? Because I've been hearing some things from other towns that are not necessarily all that good, so.
All right, I'll wait for the town manager. He can announce that at his point, but your point as well, taking Council Steves, that while we as a legislative body could probably meet, we won't be able to have, we also would have at that meeting, police chief, fire chief, accounting, all the department heads, and that could go up to about twenty people, so. I think that's why we are doing this remote participation. I would love to meet in public. It'd be a lot easier, but it is what it is. Again, if you have something different, Council Katrona, you certainly can forward it. Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, to address Council Steves' comments, you can find a lot on the MMA website about the state budget. Obviously, they're way down in their revenue numbers, like towns all across the state. They haven't had made any formal decisions yet in any way. There's a lot of discussion going on. Obviously, the big issue for municipalities, well, a couple of big issues. One is the loss of reven, revenue to all the towns is a major concern. But also, how the state funds will come. Will the chapter seventy and the chapter ninety money be cut if the state loses its revenues? I think the state is kind of waiting to find out what happens with the federal government. As many of you know, there's another COVID package that's being discussed, discussed right now by Congress, mostly the House of Representatives, about reimbursing municipalities for lost revenues, but the Senate has said it's dead on arrival. So I think there will be a bill coming forward, but exactly when, I don't think any of us know. So I think in terms of the state numbers, it's all up in the air, and they haven't come to any resolution. I think there's a lot of fear, Council Steves, among a lot of managers, about what's going to happen, but I don't think they have anything concrete yet. Another issue is I got a public announcement from the Board of Health or the Health Department to read. It's one of those issues that is gaining a lot of attention. They was asked to put it on Facebook. Some of you might have noticed a number of comments from citizens about this, but the Health Department, this is a decision of the Board of Health and the Health Department, and I'm going to read the memo they asked me to. It says, "The Southbridge Health Department respectfully requests that you announce the following at a town council meeting from now until and including June first, two thousand and twenty. The Board of Health Code of Regulations limits the amount of non-recyclable trash per household to sixty-four gallons per week. An enhanced enforcement date for this regulation has been set beginning June one, two thousand and twenty. Any non-recyclable trash over the sixty-four gallon limit will no longer be collected. To reduce the amount of trash residents are encouraged to recycle. Recycling information is available on the town website at thinkreduce.com or by contacting the Southbridge Health Department." This is an issue that's gaining a lot of attention by citizens, and I would encourage citizens not just to post comments on Facebook, but if they have any questions, to call the Health Department and get their questions answered directly by the people who are involved in this. You know, everybody has an opinion on Facebook, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's accurate. So please call the Health Department to get any particular information on this issue. Town Council, I recently received from our finance director, some of the things that we're spending the ten thousand dollars on, the board has graciously set aside for COVID nineteen related issues. We sent them a list of what we actually ordered. I think I sent a note about some hand sanitizer that we're purchasing. We're also going to, we haven't ordered it yet, and I wanted to just tell Council what I was doing before I announced it, and I sent a note to the chair this morning. We put up, and some of you have seen it, that have been in town hall, we've been putting up Plexiglas, Plexiglas shields in front of a number of different departments to protect the employees from anyone speaking directly across the counters and stuff from them, and that gives added protection to both citizens and to employees. The tax office, as you know, is the heaviest utilized office in terms of customer contact, and what we're proposing there is to put up a glass shield all the way around that counter in the tax office. We got an estimate for that. It's seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. The reason for this is that, one, obviously, it protects the town against, employees against the virus in that busy, busy office, but it also adds some added protection. As you know, right now, that counter, literally, someone could jump over. That's the department where we need security the most, because that's where any money in town hall really comes in through that tax office. So I got an estimate, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. I'll be ordering that tomorrow, but that will serve both the purpose of protecting us, protecting those employees from the virus and adding security to that office, which is, I think, is really important. We still have money within the ten thousand dollars. I do want to talk about that issue, because I recently had a meeting on what's called the CARES Act, and you guys are familiar with that, in that we'll be talking a little about, about that as it relates to the airport in tonight's meeting. But the CARES money is part of the federal act that Congress did, and the trillions of dollars they're giving out to states and municipalities to deal with any virus costs. Now, it's important to note that it's for reimbursing any kind of cost, be it payroll costs as it's related to COVID nineteen, having to buy equipment, or masks, or whatever it might be, anything that relates to this issue. Uh, we had a big meeting with state officials and everybody, talking about the fact that Southbridge could receive reimbursement for all those costs. We first have to use FEMA money, but then after that, the town is eligible. When I say the town, I'm not just talking about town side of government, but the education side of government can apply for funds as well. The money set aside is for both fiscal year twenty twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So in order to get the money out to municipalities, they've asked us to basically, through the chief executive officer of the town, to apply online for reimbursement of funds, but also to give them estimates of costs that we might expect to incur in fiscal year twenty twenty, and they will give us the money upfront before we even spend the money, because they want to get money in the hands of the town. Whatever money we don't utilize in fiscal year twenty twenty can be utilized in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I'm going to have to stress, you're not allowed to use it for any revenue losses, but we can use it to buy, you know, some of the things we're talking about, the masks and hand sanitizer and, you know, the glass shield we're talking about. Uh, all of that can be reimbursed. Any help in Andy's office, any additional help in Andy's office, any overtime as it relates to the virus in the fire and police departments. Uh, we're talking about potentially getting laptops, one laptop for each office, which will all be reimbursed from those funds. So met with the key department heads, and they're putting together a list of estimates so we can apply for those funds. It's nice to know that as long as we meet the requirements under the CARES Act, we're going to get reimbursement for all those costs. So I've asked Andy too to look at not just masks that we'll deal with, you know, the next couple of weeks, but in theory, this could reoccur in the fall or into next year. We don't know. So we need to buy enough to last us for some time as we go through this process. Uh, so we will be applying. I'm asking Karen to put together with all those departments that need to make purchases relating to it, or to put together a list, and then next week, me and Karen will apply for those funds. Had an opportunity to sit on the governor's discussion today. You may have seen it on Channel Five News. The governor announced the various phases of reopening the state. The first phase is really dealing with manufacturing and buildings, offices that are sort of closed to the public, anything that's really not directly related to dealing with customers or people, but things that have little human contact is in phase one. And he's opening, some of those are allowed to open as soon as today, and some on the twenty-fifth, and then every three weeks, they'll be instituting another phase. And the second phase, it seems to be, they really didn't talk specifically a lot about municipalities, but it seems to me we would be in the second phase where the state is opening up different types of businesses that have some customer contact. So a little bit more on the restaurants and different things that, that actually deal with customer contact. We've had, you know, there's been some discussion among town managers and town administrators in the area about what their future plans are. I've already brought back some of the employees that were working at home, and I'm expecting to bring the rest of them back around the twenty-fifth, with the exception of maybe one or two who have special conditions that wouldn't be as safe to bring them back, but we're trying to get everybody ready. It seems to me, from what I'm hearing from other towns, that a lot of them are starting to consider opening their buildings only on an appointment basis, but in the beginning of June, around June eighth, which is when they expect the governor's second phase to come in. They're talking about opening it by appointments, and I'm going to actually be discussing that with my department heads tomorrow to see how soon we can maybe open up and get appointments, people in the building, which means that my staff would name a door, walk them in, control where they go, and they'd be limited on an appointment basis. So we're, we're looking at that going forward as well. There's a lot of unknowns. The governor didn't really detail a lot of things, so it was kind of hard to understand exactly what he's doing. The MMA has a group of people involved with the governor's sort of task force, and Julie Jacobson, the town manager of Auburn, is involved with that. I emailed Julie and asked her what Auburn was doing, and that's one of towns that has a plan for opening sometime in June on a limited basis. I think we're talking about a twenty-five percent opening is what they're thinking. So going to be spending the next couple of days hearing from other towns what they're doing. I've developed a plan that I'm going to be reviewing one more time with my department heads tomorrow, and then sending it out to town council. Uh, but things are moving forward. We, we're trying to develop a process to get to, I guess, what they're calling the new normal, but it is, is difficult indeed in figuring out the best way to not only protect employees, but protect citizens as well. So that's what I have to, tonight, Mr. Chairman, and we're taking all the necessary steps to kind of move us forward, but it's a slow process. Thank you.
Council Manager, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the town manager. So going back to your announcement about the, the garbage, I just want to know, is our contract with Casella still in effect until the contract, until the landfill closes? It's a yes or no question?
The contract is in effect.
Okay, so our residents have free garbage pickup, no matter what. So why is it being restricted? And this is, I think, probably what people are arguing about, possibly, on, on, on social media. So I'm just, I'm curious, why are we restricting the garbage to, if we have free garbage pickup? So I mean, that's not probably going to be only a concern of mine. I'm sure maybe possibly Mr. Marquette, Council Marquette, Council Steves might have some concerns. So if that could be answered in a simple answer?
Thank you, Councilor. I'm going to refer this one to Andy Pelletier, our health agent. Obviously, this is a decision by the Southbridge Board of Health. I think it's a regulation that wasn't in place that they weren't enforcing, but I think they're in a better position to answer it than I am, so.
I, I understand it's a decision for the Board of Health, but we have a contract that we still have to abide by until the landfill closes. So if there's free trash pickup, then there's free trash pickup. And, and I get what they're trying to do, you know, get more people to recycle, but our residents were promised free trash pickup, and if that contract's still enforced, then that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Katrona? You're muted, Council Katrona.
I apologize for that. Thank you. To echo Council Manna's comments, I agree with a lot of what just got said. There seems to be oversight for some, but not for all. We do have a contract with Casella. There's also an educational component to this that I don't believe has been addressed. Moving on from that comment, just another one back to the town manager. Through you, Mr. Chairman, the town manager, we'll talk a little bit about reopening town hall. Residents are being asked to wear face masks.
Residents are being asked to wear face masks, if shields are up in the town hall, um, what are we waiting for? If somebody wants a birth certificate, they can call ahead, simply say, I'm coming in, grab a birth certificate, grab something. Why aren't, why isn't town hall open?
Mr. Chairman, through, through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, because the state right now is, is not having municipalities open uh at this time. Um, that is a discussion going on through the MMA and all towns. Um, but right now, uh, the governor is basically saying those types of businesses and organizations that face to face contact. Uh, he is not allowing to open at this time.
That's all for now.
Thank you, Councilor Katrona. I, I just, I know Council Marquetti has a question and I'll go to Council Steve, but just a follow up. Could, could you point me in a direction where the governor said town government was a non-essential business? That couldn't be open because I, I have to, I have to agree with Council Katrona in this that if we put all safety measures in place. Uh, I don't see why a, and, and say, okay, look, uh, access to upstairs is going to be off limits because there's no business upstairs, but the general. Business areas of the town hall are open. I can walk into a post office, mail a letter, the person's behind glass and I can do all of that. I, I don't, I, I don't understand why we can't open the town hall. Uh, um. So I mean, if you can point me in a direction where the governor said town government business offices are closed, I'll, I'll buy that, but. I, I just, I, I, I just, government has to go on. So, uh, Council Marquetti?
Well, do you, would you want me to respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, you're, you're absolutely right. The town government is considered an essential business and employees are allowed to come and work. And work in the building and, and unlike a lot of other municipalities, we've never closed our offices. So our offices remain open and the governor is announcing today that offices throughout the state can now open like ours. The difference is the relationship between the town and opening business to customers. And at this time, while the interpretation of, of the MMA and the town that I'm seeing so far believes that that is now under the governor's. Uh, process. So if I hear otherwise, I'm not truthfully, I understand the concern. I'm not even against opening. But it's my understanding right now uh that all municipalities are staying closed uh in terms of the public component of it. Uh, at this time, if I see anything different than that, I'd be happy to notify the council, but as of right now, that's what I'm hearing from all the towns.
Okay, I, I do know other towns, their offices, they have people in their town halls working. So I mean, this is not anything that we are just, okay, we made everybody come into the town of Southbridge and work. Uh, but uh, we'll, we'll follow up on that. Council Marquetti?
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment about the curbside uh announcement. It just seems like a very mean spirited and, and bad timing really to announce something like that right at this time. A lot of people are laid off. So they're home more, their kids are out of school, so they're all home, they're producing more trash and, and to come up with something like this right now. I just don't, I just don't think it was appropriate. I think that uh we do have a contract with Casella. They are required to pick up our trash. And believe me, they do pick up everything. They don't, they don't leave anything behind. And it's really their responsibility to, to um. Look at our trash and make sure we're recycling. It's not our responsibility, but if you, if you're going to keep. If the Board of Health is going to keep harassing residents, and I, I feel it's harassment if you're going to keep doing that. And I'm, I'm not going to support any more recycling IQ kits because all you're doing is using that money to hire more people to go peek in our trash. And uh, really, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. It's just bad timing, really. Uh, during this pandemic, I don't think they should be enforcing this. I think you should wait till after the curbside trash pickup contract is ended in twenty twenty four. Then if we want to revisit it, that's fine, but not at this time. Uh, maybe they can make bylaws, but so can the town, the town council can make bylaws too. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say that is if you can get some money from the CARE Act, maybe you can find something in there for, for the ambulance. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment on the same issue. Um, first of all, as far as I understand it from what the Board of Health has been doing, they've been thinking about this for quite some time. Um, and probably, I think it even goes back to well before the COVID nineteen issue. Um, but personally, I don't have a problem with it because it does not violate our contract. There, the pickup is still free. And no, it doesn't say in the contract that we have, that we have unlimited quantity that I recall. Um, and personally, I think it makes some sense to be encouraging people, and maybe, maybe there's a better way to do it than this. To encourage people to reduce the amount of stuff that's being thrown out because ultimately we need to get, we need to get ready to. Deal with this contract, the, the elimination of our, of our current curbside system, which as Council Marquetti and, and Council Adams and others know. We've been working on this for a little while now. Um, and we have to come up with something. I think this is a first step toward encouraging and getting people. Ready for it in the community level to the fact that we're going to end up having to pay for it in one way or another. Right now, we're getting it for free. And we need to kind of rein back and set, start realizing that, that this is not going to last forever. I realize it's, I realize it can be kind of a, kind of an issue for people who are, who are used to having a lot of people say, who have large families, let's say. And have multiple kids or whatever and they're, and they're used to doing all of this stuff and having it just literally disappear. But as a, as a community and a society as a whole, we have to stop thinking that it, it disappears because it really does not. And we need to address that and it's, and that's just the way, it's the way the world is working at this point. We need to, we need to deal with that. The COVID nineteen thing is an unreal, is really an unrelated issue to this because it, to, as Council Marquetti mentioned, it is still being picked up.
Okay, thank you. I would allow Council Adams to make one point. And then if this requires more discussion than what we're having during a town manager's announcements, then we'll schedule an agenda item for it. But Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, so just to add to this a little bit, I was on the Board of Health and we passed this. This was over two years ago. So the whole purpose behind that was the first, I believe it, and Andy could tell me if I'm wrong here. Uh, memory is not so, so good sometimes, but.
Again, again, we're not going to have a debate on this, whatever your point is. I'd give you time, but just, okay.
Chair, I'm trying to explain it. So six months after that was passed, I believe. The education was supposed to happen within that six month period. So that was already set in stone. When I saw this the other day though, come to my email, ask me to post on social media, I responded back to Anna with the same questions of why now? I talked to Beth, the chairman of the, the Board Health at the same time. And this was supposed to be happening a year and a half ago, or a year and a half ago, and I believe it was. But I don't agree with the wording and how it came out all of a sudden that like it's going to be enforced now. This is supposed to be enforced a year and a half ago. Um, but that's all I wanted to try to give a little education on this side, but I think all points are, are well taken on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't mean to shit cut you down, but I mean, we're getting into a, an agenda type item. Um, I just.
Got it.
My personal opinion is I think the timing was awful. That, that's all I'm going to say. When you're in the middle of a, a major COVID nineteen pandemic. To then tell residents, hey, by the way, June first, we're done. Not a good look on the government's side. But anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman. I agree with your comment as well. Uh, truthfully, I was just given the announcement to read and it's really. Something that I think members, if you have concerns, you should bring those concerns to the Board of Health to, to discuss.
Thank you. All right, presentations, we have none this evening. Citizens Forum. Do our best, conductive citizens forum tonight. We'll do our best. So is there anyone out there that wishes to address town council on anything that's not in the agenda? Ms., Mrs. Clements? Say your name and answer.
Sorry, I think my, my commuter, uh, Denise Clements, one twenty eight Country Club Place, um, may say Bob on there. I'm not really sure. Still having computer issues trying to get in on this. Um, so I, I had a couple of things. One, the town hall opening. Uh, I did want to speak on that tonight. I think Mr. Katrona brought that up, Council Katrona brought that up and um, some of the comments I've heard are well taken. And I also felt that it's time for the community to be able to go back into the town hall. It, they're going into grocery stores, they're going into restaurants to pick up food, they're going into a lot of places. Um, and it just seems the town hall is a wide open spot. There's plenty of place for tape for six feet and there's plenty of Plexiglas for everybody. So. Um, and appointments can be made and you can get a face to face. So I really do hope that you um. Uh, do something quickly and let the people go back in and get things done the way they need to get them done. Not everybody is tech savvy. Not everybody pays their bills online. Um, so on that issue, I'm, I'm hoping that uh, I heard a lot of good talk, but I, I certainly hope it's action and not just talk. Uh, because that's what the community needs. Um, I was, I, I was going to bring that up, uh, that there was as far as town hall meetings, of course. Uh, legislative bodies were exempt. So that was part of the governor's um, orders right from the very beginning. Uh, and I do wish the council were at the dais. Um, and I'm sure because of today's announcements with churches at forty percent occupancy and that type of thing that's gone on today. I'm hoping the town council meetings will continue very soon so that people can um, come up and speak and not worry about being on, on a computer. Um, the other thing as far as trash pickup, uh, that's something I was listening to a lot of this and having been through a lot of the different decisions that were made by council. And not always by the Department of Health and the Board of Health, which handles health issues. Um, I also feel that at this point as a citizen, I've been hearing from other citizens that they are overstepping. As to what their limitations are. It should not be. By the Board of Health, plus the trash pickup should be enacted within the council. Uh, we make the contract, the council made the contracts. For Casella and this community, and they should have a say so as to how things work. The recyclables has always been part of the contract. The community was always supposed to recycle. Enforcing recycling, absolutely. Go around, check the trash, give tickets for, for recycling being in the bins. Personally, I've sent in pictures of bins with boxes and things in them as they're overflowing on our sidewalks to get. Somebody to take action on, on repeat offenders as I have walked down the streets of town. That's what the Board of Health should be doing, enforcing the recycling. The limiting of the trash, if you enforce the recycling, you won't probably have to worry about the limiting of the trash. But what you're doing is you're saying you can have one bin of trash and some people, as was stated here, you just have more trash at times. And uh, I think, I think a lot of the counselors were, were very appropriate in their actions, but as a citizen. As a taxpayer, as someone who's been part of in the past, the uh, the legal issues in terms of trash and, and collections. I see a bit of overstep going on here by the Department of Inspections and Health. Um, and I think the council needs to be more involved and uh, and to help approve. You represent us. You represent this community, all nine of you. You have constituents out there who come to you with these problems and questions and concerns. You need to be active in what, in a decision like this that will affect this community. Um, so I hope you take all that into account and thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Clements. Is there anyone else in the uh, out there that wish to address the council? Oh, anyone else? Last call. All right. Thank you. Thank you for participating as a citizen, Ms. Clements. Glad at least it worked so people know they can get on. Okay, um, General Item Ten, which was a discussion of health insurance for retirees, been asked that that be removed from tonight's agenda. At the request of the per, per party, uh, due to some concerns by that board. Uh, about his attendance at this meeting, so we'll pick that up at another meeting. Um, General Item Eleven, vote to accept the warrant for the town election on Tuesday, June ninth, two thousand twenty. Unauthorized town clerk, Madeline Bonadie, is to sign the warrant on behalf of the Southbridge Town Councils due to existing COVID nineteen restrictions. It's a motion.
So move.
Second. A motion by Council Katrona, seconded by Council Steve's. Maddie, are you on?
Yeah.
Okay, Miss Bonadie. Go ahead. You have anything to add on this, Maddie?
The only thing is that I was going to say is that I was advised by Elections Division to sign your name so that with, because of the building being closed. That whether we, there's no delay in posting the warrant.
Okay. Do you want to explain the warrant for the public real quickly? This is the warrant for the regular election?
It's just, it, it's just advising, advising the citizens of Southbridge that there'll be an election that's going to be held on June ninth. The locations of all the precincts, the time the polls are open and the um, offices that are open.
And uh, Maddie, the polls are going to be open the regular times? There's no adjustments or anything?
No, right now, um, I was spoke to Elections Division and they said that if we do um, limit the polling hours, it could cause more people. In line at, at a same, at the same time.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions, Council Nash?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we have the town clerk. Uh, maybe she'd like to take this opportunity to remind folks, uh, the deadline to register to vote.
The deadline to register to vote will be Wednesday, May twentieth. And also, thank you, Council Nash. I'd like to also remind people that they can vote by. Fully this year because of the COVID pandemic, so they can just give us a call or they can download the application. Online on our website, send it into us. We cannot accept an electric, electronic signature. It has to be a wet signature and we will mail them the ballot.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve's?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
And Council Jovan?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Maddie.
Thank you.
Vote to transfer from account number zero one nine zero 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 zero, uh, dash five two one zero zero. Heating fuel to account number zero zero one two nine seven dash five two one zero electricity. And the amount of six thousand dollars to cover electricity costs to date due to increase in street light mental. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
A motion, a second. Council Adams?
Just, I think that uh, on the, the motion itself, it should be five two one two zero zero coming from.
Yeah, you're correct. Five one two. Okay. All right. Heather, uh, Miss Town Manager, do you have information on this?
No, you're right, Mr. Chairman. Let's just go directly to Heather, right? You guys have the uh, no explanation, but Heather can get into more of the detail of the council. Just have the, the uh, Board of Health Director give you more detail.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, councilors. Um, so just so you have an understanding, we are analyzing all of our electricity accounts. Um, at least all the ones that I cover, which are the majority of the accounts for the town. Um, we have been keeping our eyes on streetlights for quite some time now, knowing it was coming up, but uh. This month we have gone over, so there's two bills that come out of our streetlight accounts. It's the bill to National Grid and it's also the bill to pay. The, for the solar, which we, the solar credits. A couple of things have happened. Um, National Grid from time to time raises their rates and we are seeing the impact of raised rates. I did an analysis of the last ten months versus the previous um, years and it had gone up. Uh, depending on which account it was, it was eight to twelve percent. So we are seeing an increase in those rates. In addition, I think we're seeing a decrease in some of what we're getting for solar credits, just based on how much sun we've gotten. We usually see our biggest months, solar credits are in the summer, so they will be coming up. It's hard to, for us to project what those will be because they are definitely dependent on, you know, what the sun is. Out and how much we get. Um, that does help reduce our bills from National Grid, but we do still have to pay for those credits. To the solar company. So we know that we're, we're going to be in a deficit in this count. This amount will cover the bills for this month. We'll see where they come in next month. Um, I have projected. If everything remains the same with averages, which it's hard to do over the summer because uh, the lights aren't on as much either. Um, we also pay for that, so it depends on a lot of things, but I'm projecting that we're going to need thirty five thousand in that account.
Okay, questions? On Council Steve's? You're on mute, Council. You're on mute, Council Steve's?
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, two quick things. One is, how does this account relate to, like, like two weeks ago, we, we allowed Ron to. Um, negotiate new electricity contracts. How does this relate to that negotiation?
So our electricity bills um, in the town, just like all of. So our electricity bills, um, in the town, just like all of your electricity bills have two parts. There's both distribution and, um, transmission. So for for the actual power cost, that's what he negotiated. Our costs there are going to stay very stable, which is helpful, but National Grid can raise their cost for the transmission side. So that's what we're seeing. We're seeing those costs go up. I get that right? Two parts of your bill. So it will keep the, um, the cost of electricity generation itself, the generation side, nice and low, but our transmission side costs can still increase. That cost is directly turned by National Grid and the utility boards.
Okay. Okay. And the other question I was wondering is, um, have we looked at the idea, uh, I looked at aggregation? Or, or looking at, plus I know sometimes they're starting to look at buying their, buying the, the lights themselves.
So one thing, yep, one thing we are considering, instead of buying the lights ourselves and having to be required to do the maintenance on the lights and having more of a, a full lighting, um, additional staff and everything to be able to do that. We are actually looking at and have the, in the process of evaluating, changing our lights over to LED, which will reduce the amount of electricity that we use. Our rental rates will, um, change based on, a little bit based on that, but it should be an overall savings of somewhere in thirty thousand dollars a year, which will help that account. We are looking at doing that, probably bringing that to you as a proposal, um, in the next coming months, which will help in the long run. Plus, we are probably going to get some refunds. Those won't help this year, but it will help next year. Cause we don't get any of those rebates or refunds until the project is done and they're telling me that it's a um, two to three month process to get, uh, the, the changeover. Right now, um, one of the issues is, I'm trying to find, there's two different options for changing over, two different wattages. And I need to get some example lights to make sure that the lights we're getting, that we're going to be happy with how bright they are. That they're not going to be too dim.
Okay. And the other question I wanted to ask actually is, uh, your, your transfer request specifically states, in addition, we're seeing higher usage than last year. How are we seeing higher streetlights?
Um, well, because they come on automatically based on how dark it is and when it gets dark. So for example, if you have a lot of rainy days, your streetlight comes on earlier than if you have a lot of sunny days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for anyone? Any? All right. Seeing none, roll call.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Is this Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
And Council Manna?
Yes.
Motion carries. Vote to approve a transfer from the account number six zero zero sewer retained earnings to account number six zero zero four four zero dash five two one zero zero electricity. An amount of seventy thousand dollars to cover costs of electricity projected to be over budget for the fiscal year due to an increased usage caused by frequent wet weather this past year, which would directly affect the amount of pumping at the plant pump station.
So move.
Okay. I got a motion by Council Katrona, second by Council Adams. Guess we'll go to Heather. Heather, go ahead.
Yep. So as I said, we have been looking at all, right now, we are not over in this account, but we are projecting that we'll be, um, we will be over. Uh, I think right now we have like three thousand dollars left and the budget on this account is three hundred thousand. So, um, we are looking at for the next two months needing the seventy thousand dollars. I figured the easiest place to make sure that we don't get in trouble is to take it out of retained earnings go, given that any money that's in any of the other accounts will just revert to retained earnings next year. Um, the, I think everybody knows that we've been having some very frequent rainstorms, very large frequent rainstorms and as I've spoken about many times, our plant is heavily influenced with inflow and infiltration. What you're seeing here is a direct result of that inflow and infiltration. Our power costs go up dramatically when we have those big events and we're, we're pumping, um, you know, five or six million gallons a day versus two million gallons per day. Um, that is what you're seeing the impact of, of it being over budget. In addition, I do still will say again, we are probably seeing a little less solar credits in the same way because of the rainy events. So it kind of hits us on both sides.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone? Okay. Seeing no one, roll call.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
And Council Marquetti.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Item fourteen, vote to approve a transfer from account number zero zero one four nine nine five one three zero zero overtime to account number zero zero one four nine nine dash five one seven zero zero and the amount of three thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars to cover the cost for two summer employees for the month of June, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Council Katrona, second by Council Adams. Uh, go ahead, Heather, explain that first.
Um, yep. So last year, you know that we were able to hire two summer employees. They did work, um, forty hours a week or thirty eight hours, thirty nine hours a week and, um, we have it in the budget for, in the next year's budget also. And in order to get them started in June, which is what we would desire, we are looking to use some of our overtime money, which we projected already that we will have access, enough excess money to cover this three thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars, which is for four weeks in June, um, at thirty eight hours a week. Um, the employees will be utilized to mostly help us try to get our parks and our park facilities, our playgrounds in, as best condition, try to update them as much as we can with minimal expense and do maintenance around all of our parks.
Thank you. Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, um, to Heather. What type of work do they, will they be doing?
Um, well, they'll be trying to paint and maintain and see what we can paint to spruce up some of those playgrounds. They'll be trimming the parks, they'll be picking up litter, they'll be doing maintenance in the ball fields, whatever we, we can do. If we have painting that needs to happen out there in any of the facilities, they will be able to do that. Things that cost minimal amounts of, um, money, but can get a bigger bang for their buck. Um, it also frees up so that we don't have to be doing as much as the weed whacking and trimming in those parks um, with our regular staff so that we can work on more major projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you again, if I can continue.
Yes, go ahead.
You mentioned weed whacking and that type of, are, are these employees, um, temporary employees trained? Where does the liability fall? Should they get hurt while they're weed whacking?
Well, they're full-time town employees, so they would be covered under any of our workman's comp. They are trained, we, we do give them training, but most of the, what they're using isn't anything considered any, we're not letting them use heavy equipment or anything of that nature. Um, they're using lawn mowers, riding lawn mowers. Our staff will make sure that they feel comfortable in what they're doing, but, um, we're not just, we're not sending them out there just on their own. They have some oversight. We have our foreman and our operations manager checking on them. Whenever possible, we usually send them out with a senior staff member also, so they're just not out there on their own.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to make note again on, uh, the motion itself. It should be, uh, to account number five one one seven zero zero, seven five one seven zero zero.
Thank you. So we have that correct, account number. All right. Any questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Steves?
Yes. Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
And Council Nash?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item fifteen, vote to accept the CARES Act Airport Grant Agreement from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. An amount of thirty thousand dollars, subject to the requirements and to CFR Section two hundred dot three zero five. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion by Council Katrona, second by Council Daniels. Uh, Mr. Town Manager or Mr. Clements? Who, who are we going to go with? Mr. Town Manager? I guess a good, Mr. Clements, I, he.
Runs off, but, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a grant, uh, by the federal government. It was one of the, some of the money that they put out for the different programs earlier this year. Uh, they gave a large sum of money to the FAA and through the FAA, um, Southbridge is set to receive thirty thousand dollars. This money can be used for all operational and maintenance expenses for the airport. And we have four years to, after we receive the money, to use the money, which, you know, just for payroll, it'll be used in less than a year.
Okay. Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Uh, I think this is positive. This is, um, this is something great for the, for the airport. It's excellent. Um, my questions are, and I'm not sure if we take this up in general government, um, how the money's going to be spent? Um, where's the oversight for the, for this project? Um, I, I know, um, some years ago or last year, I know monies were allocated for the hangar repair project. Um, can you tell me, has that been completed? Um, also, um, you know, airport, it's a, it, it's a concern of the town. Um, you know, it does belong to the community. And, um, this is fantastic, the grant, but I just want to be sure that the monies are spent and we, we know how they're being spent and, and on what. And I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if that's something we take up in subcommittee?
Uh, the, the, I guess, Mr. I'll let Mr. Clements answer it, but there's an Airport Commission that runs the airport. So I think that money goes directly to the Airport Commission and that's their, their appointed authority to manage what goes on at the airport, but is that, and you are the chairman, Mr. Clements, so you want to just give us a follow-up of how that oversight goes?
Yes, in the, in the case of this, uh, grant, uh, there are regulations or requirements that we have to actually give a detailed analysis of where the money is spent. And so, uh, we, it will be, I imagine, you know, Karen would know better, but we'll probably go in our enterprise account, which, you know, the, the airport pretty much runs out of. And so, uh, we'd probably spend it on, you know, uh, Ron, we have our airport manager up there on his salary. But also as we have some capital, as you mentioned, we've been working on the maintenance hangar. Uh, we have, the office has been partially completed at that hangar, but we have to hook up water and sewer as well as, uh, complete the doors and that, you know, this thirty thousand will help go towards those maintenance costs as well to get, get it up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, so, so the, the, the oversight is with the airport manager?
Airport Commission.
Or the Airport Commission.
Go ahead, Mr. Clements. Oh, and then Ron. Go ahead, Mr. Clements.
Yeah, we, we run the airport and we work with, uh, the treasurer and the town accounts and, and the town manager on funding. So we, you know, we don't have, it's like all the enterprise accounts in town, we don't, can't just spend the money. We have to get it allocated and approved for all, everything that we spend up there. So there is oversight on all the dollars that go through that enterprise account.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, ju- just a quick comment, uh, for Council Katrona. You know, while we don't have control of the money in terms of, we don't have the authority, the authority for how the money's spent is through the Airport Commission. The Town Finance Director does monitor all the funds, ask a lot of questions about how the funds are used. Make sure that the funds are used for the appropriate, because a lot of these are grants and they have requirements to make sure that the funds are used according to the grants because we need to make sure we get the money back from the grant. So there is some oversight, but, uh, the chair is correct. That, uh, the, under state law, the authority for managing the airport does fall under the Airport, uh, Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Council Daniel?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just, uh, want to note that I'm pleased to see that in the agreement that there's a Buy American clause. Um, it's nice to know that we're supporting the people at home rather than people elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Steves?
Um, yeah, a couple of quick points. One is, I mean, uh, Mr. Clements, earlier you mentioned that part of the thing, one of the things that you have to do is hook it to water and sewer, if I heard you correctly. Um, but according to our list of, uh, capital fund balances, there's a, a reference to the phase two airport water mains that cannot proceed. Since this came up here, could you, can, you actually, do you actually have water and sewer up there?
Uh, yes, the town through a number of projects put in, uh, water and sewer. We have a full water line that comes across, uh, come the backside of the airport along with sewer. Uh, so we have, we had a maintenance hangar that had an office with bathrooms. And that used to be on a septic system and they used to have a well up there and, at, at the airport. And so that all needs to be converted to the new water and sewer lines that go directly to the town.
Okay. Um, and the other thing I, I noticed that reading through the documents, um, although the agenda item says thirty grand, the documents don't, don't refer to fi- any specific money at all. Well, at least the ones we have in our packet. I don't know if somebody else got a different, some other document that I don't have, but the, the grant letter doesn't, doesn't say any money at all, which is kind of weird, but just an observation.
Mr. Chairman? No, it is on page four, it says maximum obligation. They have maximum obligation, the United States payable on this offer is thirty thousand dollars. Page four. CARES Act Airport Grants Agreement.
Okay, I do see it. Okay, sorry for that. Thanks.
Council Adams, do you have a question?
No, that was, I was going to answer that. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none. Thank you, uh, Mr. Clements for being here tonight. Roll call.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
And Council Steves?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Clements.
Thank you very much.
Oh, did you get my email today? Can you shoot me an email tomorrow? Rick, give me a call. Thank you. Um, item sixteen, vote to accept the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection two thousand twenty recycling IQ kick grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. An approval for the temporary non-benefited grant funded positions required to complete this year's grant program. Is there a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Council Katrona, seconded by Council Adams. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you should be somewhat familiar with this. Uh, we apply for this type of money before our health agent is on the phone to explain more detail. But, um, it is used for the temporary employees and to improve the quality of recycling in town. With that through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to our health agent.
Good morning, members of the council. Um, I believe Anna is also on the call with me and she did a ton of work to set this up. This is a grant that we, um, got last year. And in a meeting that, to update the counselors in, I believe it was January or February, um, we also asked if the counselors were um, supportive of us going after the same grant, uh, for this coming year. Um, the counselors that were present, it was an EHS meeting at the time, the counselors that were present said, yeah, we think it was a good thing. Um, at the meeting, we expressed that the previous year, we had gotten the contentious roots, if you will, the, the roots of concern down from over thirty, almost forty percent contamination, down below fifteen, um, consistently below fifteen and periodically below ten. So it was a very successful program. Again, this program is to try to make sure that our product is marketable when we do go into a contract of our own because hopefully it will reflect on the cost of that contract. So is Miss Anna here?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
I can, Miss Anna. Thank you. Do you have anything you would like to add to this?
Well, I just, um, you know, we sort of, uh, redid the routes a little bit to, um, to go to areas that we hadn't reached last year. Um, see where else can I add to it? Um, we, you know, we feel like we could go out and do this safely using the guidelines that have been set up by the CEC. And it could be an opportunity for. And it could be an opportunity for people to have some work for a little while while they're, you know, not working another job. Um, yeah, I, I can't think of anything else to add, but I certainly could answer any questions.
If, okay, if I may, the, um, we anticipate or we would hope to be able to put four people, um, as part-time out on the curb. Um, I do not know if the council remembers this particular grant. It was a strange grant that we spend the money and then receive it back. So the grant says thirty thousand, but it's actually up to thirty thousand, depending on how much we end up investing in the project. If there are any questions, either Anna or I could take them on.
Okay. Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to whoever can answer this. Um, so I did catch that, the reimbursement. I do remember discussing this grant, but everything's reimbursed. So did you account for that money in your budget? That, I mean, just, um, thinking that perhaps maybe we may get this grant, is this money accounted for in the budget?
Um, I'm actually gonna defer to Anna because it's not, it's not spend out of our pocket and get it back. It's tell them what we need to spend and they spend it, I believe, but Anna can confirm that.
Well, I read it, so, Mr. Pelletier, I'm reading on page one, number five, where it says invoice and grant funds are dispersed on a reimbursement basis after the grantee has expended funds for approved pers, purposes. So.
Right.
So we gotta, we gotta, like, submit. We, we gotta submit that we are going to be spending the money? Is that what it is?
Uh, no.
I could?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so there, some of the, um, budget items are paid directly through, from DEP. Like, all of the educational materials, um, are invoiced directly to DEP. The only thing that we pay out upfront is the payroll to the temporary non-ben, benefited workers. And if we're gonna, we're planning to do another, um, billboard over that, because it is a contract directly with us, we do pay that, and then we're reimbursed for that. Uh, any newspaper ads is the same thing. We would pay that ahead, and then we're reimbursed for that. Mileage, uh, again, is one of those items that we would pay and then they reimburse. But it, the way that it was set up last year through the accounting department is, is kind of like a, um. Almost like deficit spending, if I remember right. The, the grant, and Karen can probably weigh in better on this. We didn't have to spend any of our money upfront. The grant was up to this many dollars, I believe. Karen, correct me if I'm wrong before I put us in a hole, but, um, I believe.
That's, okay, I, I'm sorry, I'm just not hearing that from, I'm hearing one thing, then another thing.
All right, Karen's on the call. Karen, can you explain how this is, works, please?
Sure. So, once the grant is awarded, then we set up the grant account and we charge the expenses to the account. And then every so often, Anna puts in a reimbursement and we get the money returned.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about having the money in there?
That is correct.
And we, we're not going to hire anybody part-time until we're sure that we're getting the grant?
Because I. If I may.
Hold on.
If I may, the, the letter, we've already received the grant. The only thing that's required to be done at this point is for council to accept it and sign it. Town manager would sign it. We've already been awarded the money.
Okay.
Well, that wasn't said in the beginning.
Well, it's vote to accept the grant, so that means we got the grant. And so we have to, just like we do with your other contracts and accept it and have Town Manager.
Yeah, right. But, I mean, she said that we already have the money.
All right, yeah. Okay, you all set, Councilman? Right now?
Yeah.
Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the billboard, isn't that, I know we have to pay for the billboard or through the grant. Now, that billboard is pre-designated already by DEP, correct? It's not something that we just come up with?
If I may, that is correct. All of the artwork is pre, kind of like pre-approved by the state. It's sort of like a statewide message. We can add our information, like, um, we had information about the inspections department, our telephone number, our website, that sort of thing, but it is a standard statewide message.
So, uh, the, the question I had, were you guys able to hire all four people last year when you received the grant, or was it like two or three?
Uh, we did run into difficulty last year and, and we're only able to hire three people a, and not for the duration that we wanted to either. So that, that may be a challenge again, but, um, we're willing to try.
Right, three days a week, every other week is, is pretty tough. But I will say that, um, hiring those individuals on last year really brought down our percentage as far as trash within our recycle bins, uh, which saved us some money being fined for having trash within recycling. So I'm obviously in favor of this, uh, this grant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Steve?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, two quick questions, um, I guess through you, probably to Anna. Um, one thing that I was curious about is, uh, when do you plan on start ad, advertising the new jobs? And the other is, what, what, if you have any evidence of the effectiveness of the billboard itself in terms of outreach and people responding to it and that kind of stuff?
Hmm, I can't put any quantified, um, numbers to how well the billboard, you know, how well the response was on the billboard. Um, I know, you know, anecdotally, we, we had a lot of feedback about the billboard that it was seen by, you know, people and they commented on it. Um, as far as the temporary positions, I'm sorry, what was that? What was your other question?
Uh, when you were planning on advertising for them?
Oh, as soon as possible. If, if the council approves it, we would, we would put that out as soon as possible.
If, if I may, the, um, the positions are already job description from last year, so we're all set with that. We just gotta advertise them. Um, we would hope to advertise as early as possible in order to get the most of the summer out of them. Um, as far as the billboard is concerned, again, I can't speak to the effectiveness of it, but I can say this is the same billboard that we put our drug, our anti-drug messages on, our anti-substance abuse messages on. It is, in my opinion, the most visible billboard in town. So, um, we're optimistic about the impact of it.
Okay. Any other questions from counselors? All right. Mrs. Clements, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr., thank you, Chairman Jovan. Uh, yes, um, I was a little concerned when I heard a comment about they already had grant money. Uh, so I have a question. Do you get an award notification before you receive a check? To whoever's. So you received. I'm sorry.
I could respond to that. So, yes, we did receive an award letter and it should be in, should have been in the, uh, packet that went to council along with, you know, the budget and the, all the other, uh, grant documents. Uh, so we don't actually have money in hand, but it's, you know, it's like we said, a reimbursable on some portions and then, uh, um, some of the invoicing is going directly to, to the DEP.
Uh, if I could follow up, please?
Yes, go ahead. One more question.
Thank you. So the, so the reason I asked that question is because you made a statement to Councilor Manna that you had the, you had the check. So, yeah, the concern is council must approve all grants. And that's before you actually get the grant. You can't accept the grant unless the council's approved it. So I just wanted to clarify for anybody else listening who might have been confused too. Generally, you'll get an award notification. Council has to approve that you accept it because if council doesn't approve, anybody accepts their grant, then that money can't come in. So charter says council must approve all grants. So that's the only reason I brought that up is because it, it was a concern to my ears that you were moving ahead or anybody might move ahead on something before council accepts the grant. We've had this in the past. If you don't, if council, if there are strings attached to a grant that council might not approve, then they don't have to. I mean, no matter, sometimes departments have gone out and applied for grants that are not a hundred percent within what account, what the council thinks is right for the town, and there may be strings attached, as I said. So I'm just saying, uh, I was just curious if you had received an award letter and not said, sure, send us the money. That's, if that makes any sense of what I'm saying, but I just wanted to.
So, I, I, I know Karen, Karen's gonna weigh in, but my understanding from what I heard, and I, I think I heard check, but I also heard very clearly that this was a reimbursement program. That you submit the invoices and you get reimbursed. But Karen, if you could elaborate?
Sure. I think, um, that Anna just misspoke when she said that we don't have any money house. We're waiting for the grant to be approved and then we'll move forward and then as we go forward to spend the money, we will request the reimbursement.
Right. I thank you that, it was just as I said, though, what you explained too. Just wanted to make sure that protocols, that we accept grants before we make ourselves liable with the money, that's all. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Clements. We've been very careful to do that in my tenure as chair, so. Go ahead, Andy, Mr. Councilor?
Um, just want to assure the board that, I mean, the council, that, um, I would probably, as long as I'm sitting in this seat, this department will not even look for a grant unless we feel we have council backing on it. Um, unless instructed otherwise by a, a town manager. I can assure you our town manager did not do that. I don't know how a future town manager will. But we will at least mention it to the council before we even apply for one. And I am very familiar, and Anna's very familiar with the protocol and the requirement of the charter that the council approve all grants.
Yep, and, and we did vet this through, uh, subcommittee, uh, to discuss, and I think council, to discuss the, the application of the grant as well. So, do I have any other questions from anybody? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Katrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Mark Hedy?
No.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steve?
Yes.
And Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Item seventeen, review of the updated capital outlays balances of April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty. Make any recommendations or take any action on staying. So, Mr. Town Manager? You're on mute, Mr. Town Manager. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Um, thank you first, everybody. This is something that myself and the finance director have been working on some time. Uh, the town council chairman actually brought up this issue, uh, some time ago for us to look at capital projects that were approved and funded, but the money had not yet been spent. Uh, we put together, uh, we actually had to meet with each individual department head that had a capital project to find out what the status of that various project was. And did it need to continue to be funded, timelines and potentially when it would be accomplished, why it wasn't accomplished and, and, um, we also needed to find some money for a couple of other items. Uh, one, you remember, we wanted to look for some money for the cancer screening from the fire department. So, a, a big issue right now, as we've talked about in the past, when we were looking at free cash, is the issue of trying to get money back into the stabilization account for the purposes of making up for any potential revenue lost, uh, any revenue loss. Uh, in terms of the general fund, in terms of what we put into the stabilization, the plan that me and the finance director have developed puts a hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-four cents into the stabilization fund. Um, Mr. Chairman, I could point out a couple of things, or we could go line by line and have the department head explain why a project might be closed or what's going on with that particular line item. How would you like to go forward, uh, with this presentation?
Like, he'd give you an overview of the presentation and your recommendations, and then if councils have questions on specific items, um, or concerns, we can then bring them up to the specific department heads.
Terrific. Okay, then, then folks, I, I appreciate it if you would look at. We'll start with general capital projects. You'll see a chart that starts with headlines of vending balance, balance. Close the free cash, close the stabilization, keep open, transfer and combine, reallocate. Uh, when you find that chart, I'm, I'm just gonna quickly go through the items uh, and quickly talk about them. If you want more details on a specific item, I'll probably call on the department head that's involved. The first line item, election voting machines is closed. The second item is police bulletproof vests, uh, was allocated six of eighteen, free cash, fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Uh, those bulletproof vests have already been purchased. The police chief is here to explain it. But, uh, we don't, no longer need that money, so we want to close it to the stabilization fund since we've already bought those bulletproof vests. Purchase equipment ambulance, uh, is closed. That's completely done. South Street three hundred, uh, that's an ongoing project. You're familiar with the borderline project we have on, uh, the, I'm sorry, the road project on South Street. Three hundred thousand dollars. We want to keep that account open. Rail Trail River Bank, uh, there's, it was originally fifty thousand we put aside. There's thirty thousand two hundred in, uh, that fund still. Um, we want to transfer nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars of that to take care of the uh, fire cancer screenings that the town council wanted to move forward with. Repairs to Capilla Park, hundred fifty dollars and eighty-one cents. We're gonna close it, the stabilization. Sidewalk repairs, this is money we do for ongoing sidewalk repairs. And a continuous project, we keep it open. A place dress the street retaining wall, you guys are familiar with that project. The woman has a problem with the retaining wall. Um, that is thirty eight thousand oh sixty-five. Uh, we're gonna keep that open. The like, the work there is likely not to incur until spring of twenty twenty. DPW pickup is, the project is complete, nineteen hundred and thirty-seven, back to stabilization. Health Department Pickup Truck, again, nineteen hu, eleven hundred and ninety-two dollars to stabilization. The project is complete. Town Hall, Town Hall Side Stairs, you know, that's something that Heather's been working on. She wants to combine that project with another project in order to take care of that whole sto, um, stairs project, as you remember. You have to get rid of the, uh, oil tank to be able to make that project go forward. Police parking lot late, uh, paving is done. Uh, we're gonna remove the three hundred and some dollars there, move it to the stabilization account. New animal control kennel, it's money we set aside for the kennel, hundred and eighteen thousand. That's an ongoing project. Demolition of buildings, we have that money set aside for the future demolition of buildings that frankly have already uh, been, well, a number of buildings have already been slated and it's an ongoing project. Improved recreation area parks and fields, fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. That's an ongoing project. Uh, Franklin Terrace retaining wall, two hundred thousand dollars, another ongoing project. Uh, design engineering hook, that's the project we're offering with, the whole hook tree project. There's a hundred and eighty-four thousand there. That's an ongoing project. Fire station comprehensive study nine ninety-seven, uh, that's gonna stay open to deal with some ongoing website costs. Upgrades and strengths of free parking lot, again, twenty-five grand, ongoing project. Demolition of blighted buildings, uh, again, that goes to the, uh, other account. Same thing, trying to tear down these buildings. Quote about rail and bank stabilization, uh, twenty-nine thousand, we want to keep that open. Uh, as you remember, there's two issues there. Uh, the bank, the state of Massachusetts is doing. The trails committee still wanted to finish the trail from where the bank deteriorated and put down material from there to the road so that people could bike and walk on it. That money's still available. Uh, they would like to keep it open, open. Uh, quote about stabilization, railroad steel, I'm sorry. Improved handicap access, ten thousand dollars, want to close the stabilization. We tried to find out what that project was about. It was something that our former recreation director, it put money aside for, but nothing ever happened. We believe it had to do with the West Street Park, but there seems to be nobody interested in doing anything with it, so we want to put that money back to stabilization. The signage, you remember, we put in a beautiful signage around town for economic development purposes. There's two thousand four hundred and forty dollars left. That's complete. That's gonna go to stabilization. Rear handicap entrance, again, that's, we're gonna combine that with the other money for the stairs and just make it one project. Uh, I'm not sure if we're gonna have enough funds for that, even with the two combined. Library security cameras, that project is complete, fourteen seventy-two, back to stabilization. DPW fuel system upgrade, again, another completed project, hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents back to stabilization. Conversional financial software, that's the ongoing munish project that we've talked about. Resurface Henry Street Courts and equipment upgrades, uh, there's twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. I'd like to, uh, look at transferring that. There's a lot of interest. And I'm gonna ask, uh, I've asked Jared to look at that, to look at, uh, And I'm gonna ask, uh, I've asked Jared to look at that, to look at, uh, redoing and upgrading the handball courts. That money was set aside to, uh, if whatever we, um. Had leftover from the basketball courts, we could use to fix up the park, so we still want to do that. But a big part of that is that now that the. Handball courts have become very popular, we'd like to fix those up and get it done. So we need the council to allow us to do that, because that's not in the original language. Fire department chair replacements, uh, that project is keep open, there's another thirteen hundred bucks, uh, we need to keep it open. The chief, fire chief asked us to keep the administration vehicle open for two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. School department capital, thirty-six thousand, Karen has talked to the school department, they want to keep that open. Police department capital, uh. Eight thousand, eight twenty-two, again, the police chief would like to keep that open. DPW is a, a pickup truck, seventy-five grand, the bill is in process, so that's moving forward. Replace four dumpster sander, again, going for it, those in process, that project's moving forward. IT windows that will work on, that's all completed. Forty thousand in recreation, a playground, uh, it's all been ordered. Uh, it's scheduled to replace that playground, and I think that's gonna be done in the next month, month and a half or so. The storm drainage broker program, you guys are familiar with that, a hundred and seventy-five grand for that, that's an ongoing project. Town hall renovations, fifty-nine thousand. Uh, that's, I think that's the, um. The HVAC stuff that we're doing in various departments. Library improvements, eighty-five thousand, that's the plaster ceiling issue that she's getting engineering work done. I think it came before the council for that project. Town hall repairs and improvements, fifteen thousand dollars, that was for, most of it was for an electrical problem that was identified in the facilities management plan. Uh, we had a school electrician come in, they don't believe we need that at this time, and it was supposed to be some of that money for painting. Uh, we really feel it's more important to put that in stabilization at this time. Library repairs, nineteen thousand, six forty-nine, we worked with Margaret, that can go to stabilization. It's no longer needed. DPW roof repairs, uh, I would like to reallocate to heating. Town hall roof repairs, thirty thousand dollars, ongoing project. Um, that's to just keep doing repairs on the roof of the town hall. DPW building repairs, twenty-four thousand, ongoing project. Airport windows, fifty-nine hundred, we can close, that project is complete, that can go back to stabilization. Repair of our airport hangar, uh, that's what I think somebody mentioned about, uh, fixing up that hangar to try to get a tenant back in it. That money set aside for that project by the airport commission, they want to keep it open. Police facilities improvements, close the stabilization, fourteen thousand, three fifty. Uh, chief says they're not needed at this time. Town hall facility improvements, thirty-seven thousand, seven ninety. That's the HVAC units, I, I apologize, I have to go back to that other one and ask Heather what it's for. Uh, library heating repairs, twenty-three thousand, we all know what's going on there to work on the heating unit. Library gutters and dental spouts, ninety thousand dollars, ongoing project. Uh, community center roof and gutters, that project got delayed a little bit in the transition between Mike and Keith. But that project needs to move forward. And then there's a negative in the facility abatement that Karen could talk about. I'll let Heather get into the sewer and water projects, uh, we went through them with her. Uh, most of the projects are ongoing projects and will keep going, but there's some. Projects that are gonna be closed out and go back, they won't go back to our stabilization fund, but go, go back to the. Uh, water and sewer stabilization funds are free, uh, or retained earnings. That's a kind of a general overner, uh, overview. And, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go through that, either myself or the department head involved.
All right, we're gonna hold on to Heather's portion of this to go through this first section of it, so that we can talk about that section first. So, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I still, like, I talked about this, um, when it came up with the, the blighted, um, account. For the demolition of the buildings and stuff. And I really still feel, because there's like five hundred thousand dollars in that account, it's not moving. And I, I don't feel that it should be funded like this. I think that money this year can go someplace else, that's. Could be, it can be better used someplace else. I know we have a blended account, but the money's not being used.
Thank, thank you, Councilman, uh, Council Steve.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions about some specific things in the list here. Um, first off, so was the, was the Quinabug Valley Rail Trail project actually completed?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, such a good question. The state, you're talking about the, the stabilization of the bank itself, Council Steve?
Yes.
I mean, Heather, I think Heather can give you a direct answer if the state's finished that project or not. I know that we were very annoyed by the project and I was going over budget. And we handed it back to the state to deal with, but Heather, you want to tell us the status of that at this time?
Um, I can, I, I can give a brief status. I know that the state put it up to bid. Um, I believe that there has been some discussion and I think it has actually been awarded. I don't know how much work has actually gone down, o- o- on down there, um, there has been some discussion. Uh, with us because the state had asked us if we could donate some large boulders we had in my yard and. I kind of agreed that, yeah, we can let them use them for the project so that it would keep moving. Um, but, so I believe they are starting to work on it. I haven't personally gone down there to see how far they have progressed.
Okay, um, and the rela- related question to that is, one of the other items mentions twenty-nine grand left. Uh, for, uh, recommending reallocation for non-DOT trail projects. Do you have any particular projects in mind?
Um, I don't, I think that the town manager was gonna leave that up to the trail committee to come back to recommendations and. Um, suggestions to the town manager. Um, what they would like to be seen done. Um, the issue with it being non-DOT is that we don't have a lease agreement. Um, to be on their trails, so we're looking at trails that aren't controlled by them.
Well, I was specific, that made me think of coal forest and like, there's a bunch of, bunch of wetland areas in coal forests that could. Really benefit from like a small causeway or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, other issues that I was concerned about, um, the Central Street parking lot upgrades line, the twenty-five thousand and change. It says it's set aside to cover costs above this NBBG grant money, but we also have a later item, uh, farther down this agenda. About a hundred and thirty-six grand for phase four for that project. So, what is, what is this twenty-five grand actually being used for? I mean, so, not being sure anything at the moment, but, so why is it really there?
I, I might be able to switch it on. Okay.
Who, who, who just?
Go ahead, Peg.
Hi, yes.
Oh, hi, Peg.
Hi, nineteen thousand of that is already encumbered.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's four thousand remaining.
So, that nineteen thousand, that was the miscellaneous income from that prior agenda item?
No, that's the hundred ninety-five thousand you raised, um, of which, uh, bulk, uh, was used towards the phase one. And so it's encumbered towards the last of the B and W contract. We're holding, um, a large amount in retainage right now. Until we complete the last of the electrical work.
Okay, okay, okay. Um, let's see, also, um, I noticed that there were six items that were labeled department head to spend. And you kind of, you kind of touched on that a few minutes ago, Ron, uh, but I was curious about that, because. Um, what, what do you exactly intend to use them for? Because considering the fact that they are assigned to be capital project funding. I don't know if, I don't know if the department head would legally be allowed to spend them without coming back to the council for approval.
Now, to you, Mr., I think, Council Steve, I, I'm not sure exactly which one you're talking about. But those are ongoing projects, so they're not spending it outside of the capital project. Just designated somewhere else, it's within the scope of the project itself.
Okay. Let me have, uh, let me have, uh. Seth, you're on from the school department. Seth, what is, uh, in your capital that they have? Uh, keep open for a department head to spend, what do you have left out of last year's, that's out of last year's spending, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Do you know what that is for?
I believe these are projects that we're finishing up this year, that are still open.
Right, so within that capital approval that we had given that amount for you to spend, that three hundred thousand, that's what's left. Uh, for school projects, correct?
Yep, and we're just finishing up the spring.
Okay, okay. Um, and also, uh, the FY thirteen Town Hall improvements line, the fifty-nine thousand and change. Um, I was wondering if, um, if that's still sitting around, maybe that would be good money to use. For, uh, engineering and or historical work on fixing the windows.
So, Council Steve, Steve's. If you remember last year, we had that conversation in it quite in depth when it came around in this time. Because out of that capital request, there was a request for X number of dollars for engineer for windows. And then we had Karen, if you recall, go down to her office, and there was a lot of discussion about, well, why are you asking for more money? If you go back to that line item of two thousand and thirteen and you've done absolutely nothing with it. So we've had this conversation, that's over a year old, so. That, I think, was the intent on, on that, at that period of time. I may be wrong, but that's my recollection of that meeting, quite in depth, we had a conversation about it.
I do recall that conversation as well, and, uh, that's what I was wondering, is it, it's still sitting around, we need to do, we need to do that work, and. If that fund's there, and it can fund it, it may be much more expensive than that, I don't know. Um, but we still need, that work still needs to get done. So, we gotta do something for that town hall, it's a, it's an important town resource and. Some of those, those windows especially are kind of, are kind of nice too, so, nice to keep them, and more energy efficient. And if you can answer something with that, Karen?
Karen?
Yeah, um, yes, what I would recall is the same as you, um, Chairman Jovan, is that there. Money in there that is allocated for carpeting too, that needs to be done. I think it's the. Clerk's office and maybe either the town managers or the assessor's office, so there's some. But yes, it was a year ago and we said we're gonna put some engineering money aside for the windows, but I'm not really sure where that stands. At this point, nothing's been spent against it.
Okay, and I think that's what. Whole station about. Capital outlays and these projects that have been hanging around for so long, and what are we doing to, to bring it to some sense of closure?
Agreed, so, and the last thing I wanted to ask about is the FY sixteen Town Hall Roof Repairs line, the thirty grand. It's listed as keeping open, but for what? What, what do you plan on doing with it? Is it even still necessary? Was that work ever done?
Think that was another engineering, to have somebody engineer the roof. That's what the last conversation I had with the town manager.
Yeah, so, so part of this is that Heather's been talking about getting somebody to go up there and, and engineer it. And look at what's going on, but also the money is, I remember Heather and our discussion was also for repairs. Cause we've had various issues, the roof is old, and we have to repair it until some major overhaul is done. Heather, you want to elaborate a little bit more?
Sure, I'll elaborate. So, it's not major repairs that need to be done, it's more minor repairs, they're just expensive minor repairs. To replace that whole roof would be over two hundred thousand dollars. Probably even more, the roof, the whole roof doesn't need to be replaced. There are certain locations in that roof that have issues, it's a slate roof. It's very specialized work to be done. When we even have anybody go out there to evaluate it, because of how access concerns are there, we have to pay for somebody to do that evaluation. The issue is, and when that person can come out to do the evaluation is limited to basically Friday afternoons. Um, I've worked with a couple, um, specialized roofing companies trying to figure out. How to get a scope of work even to get people to quote on to come out to do the evaluation. Um. We're, it, you know, I, I get pretty, my hands pretty tied that. I have to get three quotes when I can't even find three people to look at it. So, we will continue pushing on, hopefully we can find somebody that's. Qualified to go out there and do some evaluation. We know of a couple areas that are problems over and back at the back bathroom. And again, in the valley, right near the side stairs are issues. We also have some concerns with the upper turrets, I don't believe they are actually ever done, but they have to get up there closer to actually be able to see them. Which involves needing very high lifts to be able to go up there. So, we will be looking to see what we can get so that somebody can write a scope, so that we can actually go out to bid for it. Um, like I said, it's specialized. Um. We're aware of it, we tried to work on it, sorry, my cat wanted to walk in front of everything. Um, and we will continue to try to press on to see if I can get somebody. To at least come out and give me the evaluation so that we can go out to get bids to work on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council Adam?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I was gonna, I was gonna hold off until later on this year, but, um. Just because there hasn't been a, uh, any type of major detailed plan from the trustees board, uh, because of this COVID. Issue, but, uh, last year, obviously, everybody knows that they. We voted into, uh, uh, within our bylaws, uh, to bring in a trustees board for. Take care of the monuments within the town, the veterans monuments, and I've asked, uh, a few times about maybe taking a look at. Putting some of this money, reallocation to some of these monuments within town itself, or at least set up a, an account. For this committee, obviously, we have to go through the town council. Uh, but there are a lot of monuments, especially the honor roll one, that's gonna need some, um, dire work here pretty soon. And also the World War One monument, um, a- as well, so. Uh, I know some of this reallocation of, of some of this money that's been just sitting here for the last seven years. Um, you know, I would like to see some of that money go into the trustees account, obviously, has to be approval through the town council. Or if any work gets done, but, uh, I, I think, uh, if we're gonna stand that thing up, we're gonna have to properly fund it as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils have questions, uh, Mr. Town Manager?
Hey, just if I could respond to Council Adam, so, Council Adam, I don't, I haven't recalled getting any kind of estimate yet. Do you have any kind of numbers in terms of what you would need for that? Man, I'm not against, I mean, we're, we're moving some of this money to stabilization, obviously, because we're concerned about the revenue shortfall. I'm not against doing something like that, but you'd have to give me some plan, some amount of money to stand up some kind of account like that. I don't know if you're talking about three grand or twenty grand, but, I, you know, we can figure that out, I'm happy to work with you on it. I don't know if it needs to be done now, because I don't know what kind of numbers you're talking about.
Well, that's why we, I know, I, I thought, I believe I talked to you and the, the chair before, and I know Russ came into your office, the chair of the trustees. To talk about the World War One monument as well. I was looking more like ten thousand dollars. Um, started off just, uh, because we found, we now have other monuments that have never been mounted, and that. We have found throughout the town, uh, that need to be taken care of. Um, that may not cover everything, and obviously, there's gonna have to be, uh. Donations involved as, as we move forward from, from, uh, local businesses or town people, uh, to help offset some of this, but, uh. Um, yeah, that, you know, that, when I'm looking at it top of my head, it's about ten thousand dollars.
So, so, three, Mr. Chairman, I'm not against it, if con- council wants to set aside ten grand of some money here, I'm not against it. But I'm also say this, I'm happy to work with Councilor Adams in the future when we have a, a more concise plan, get the money, wha- whatever. This is the desires of council, but I think that there'd be a lot of support for what Councilor Adam is talking about. Uh, be it now or in the future, you know, it's, it's up to him. I don't know how long it would take, Council Adam, for you to develop a more, you know. Develop plan with finances and what you want to do and all that. If it's gonna be a while, I would say let's not do it here, we'll do it someplace else, but you think it's something?
No, I'm not, I'm not, that's why I said maybe later on I'd come back, uh, I wouldn't come back, the chair of the trustees would have to go through the subcommittees. Obviously, with Heather and the town manager and working all that stuff out, but, uh, I look at the cost, but, uh, I just want to put it in everybody's, uh, part of their mind a little bit, that's all.
And I'll say this, we're not talking huge money, so I think we can figure it out in the future, I, I think it. I'd be happy to bring it forward to town council for their consideration in the future, once we have more of a developed plan.
Council Daniel? Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the, uh, W Director. Uh, the very last line item, Fund Three Thirty-five, the pollution abatement project. You have the, um, a, a negative amount in that right now. Are you looking to borrow just that negative amount, or are you looking to borrow in the future a lot of funds?
Um, I think Karen could probably speak to the, the amount on there better than I can, but. We actually are going up for a short-term borrowing for that project already, um, to cover, uh, costs. For the ongoing engineering, um, work that we have to do to support the application that's into the EPA. Um, they came back and the state came back asking us to do some additional testing along the site. I think we, we had that proposal in front of you before, so we will be doing a short-term borrowing for that. In addition, in the future, we will be looking to do a much more considerable borrowing to do the final cleanup there. Um, so that, I think, is just the negative account that we, maybe Karen can ask, answer that better.
Yeah, sure, if I could, I think we're gonna borrow about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. That covers the, um, latest two amendments with our engineering company. And then we're gonna see what comes out of there, and then we're gonna evaluate how much more we would need, that would be our next step after that.
All right, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if we're borrowing. Short term, there's gonna be cost to the town for that, isn't there a principal and interest?
There is going to be, but, um, on the short-term borrowings, the, the rate is, is extremely advantageous right now, so. There is going to be, but, um, on the short term borrowings, the the rate is is extremely advantageous right now. So I think we'll, we'll get a really good rate out of it.
All right.
Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, if I could just respond, and Karen, please correct me if I'm wrong here. I I believe that, and I was kind of surprised by this, that the previous town council some time ago authorized uh, a borrowing of up to a million dollars for this project. And I, you know, I was surprised. I was, when I first heard about this, I thought that they had a million dollars set aside for this project. As it turns out, that's not the case. As the, the borrowing was authorized, means that, you know, it's a future debt if we borrow the money, but it it's not set aside anywhere at this time. So am I correct with that, Karen? That that's the, that's what we're we're at?
Yes, Mr. Town Manager, you're correct. And that's why we don't want to go out and borrow the millions whatever that we have left left in the authorization until we have a plan. So we don't have to pay all the interest costs on that.
All right, then, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, please, I stand to be corrected. But if we're putting, if there's a, an amount that's going to be close to stabilization, that we're being forced to borrow in the very near future, uh, why can't that money be put against the borrowing so that we're not having to pay the borrowing fees and the interest on the amount, since the amounts are to be pretty close?
I think you probably, you know, I think you're probably right on that. We probably could move it from another um, general fund capital project into there to cover. Just couldn't move it from water or sewer, but we could move it from another project.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Town Manager?
So so to part of that discussion, uh, once this money moves into stabilization, uh, that is a transfer request that can be made. It's a little bit harder to take money out for stabilization, uh, Counselor Daniel, but it can be done. Just because we're moving it to stabilization, it doesn't mean we can't spend. As a matter of fact, if the revenues aren't as bad or the federal government makes up some of those lost revenues, then those are definitely all things we can look at. Uh, besides purchasing some of the things that we originally attended when we talked about the free cash distribution, right? So the the matter of fact, if we're going to transfer now to stabilization, doesn't mean we can't do that. That's still something we can look at.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor McKenna?
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Um, the animal control kennel, I thought the last meeting you said you you were putting that into stabilization. I thought I could have sworn that you were doing with it.
To you, Mr. Chairman. So you, Counselor McKenna, you're talking about the free cash distribution? We were going to put an additional, I forget if it was a hundred and thirty grand or something into the animal control shelter. We decided because the project is going to be delayed, not to use that free cash money. This is money that's already, but it's been put into the account, but not enough to do the animal control kennel. So we're not taking out what money's been set aside. But money we were going to put into that account, we decided to put into stabilization.
Okay. Uh, the the Dresser Street and Franklin Terrace retaining wall. Uh, this was voted on last summer and was presented to us as that this was a dire emergency and that wall was about to collapse. So what's going on with that? Now here we are, almost a year later, and nothing's been done there. Sorry.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the DPW Director talk about more of this. Me and her actually discussed this today uh, in the contractor that's been essentially put in the lowest bid for that project. Obviously, we had to have the engineering work done. We had to put it out to bid. Uh, I think we have a bidder for that. We were running into some financial issues as to will we have enough to fully fund that project. But Heather, I'll let you carry the ball from there.
Yep. So, um, this has been a project that's been ongoing for some time. We had some issues regarding the easement with that project. Once that got cleared up, which has just been, um, it, we prepared the bidding documents after the design was completed. It's been out to bid. Um, and we did receive bid results. Those bid results are still being evaluated that time. That's why you hope have them in front of you tonight as a meeting for our contract. Um, but as soon as we complete that evaluation of the bid and make some determinations regarding funding, because as um, the town manager did say, it, the bid came in at two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Um, with the amounts, the two amounts you have there, it looks like we have enough money, but we still have an outstanding encumbrance of the engineering costs um, that needs to be paid out of the original thirty six. And that will give us no oversight cost, which this is a very structural wall, which will need to be inspected by um, someone to be able to confirm that the concrete is being put in correctly and all that that work is being done um, correctly per con- per the design. So yes, we're running into some issues. Yes, it's it's still being worked on. Um, it, some of these things take time. They don't happen overnight.
And I would just like to say one more thing. I think that I would have to agree with Counselor Manna. I think we should take a look at that money that's sitting in the, uh, blighted account. I don't think they need five hundred thousand. Uh, I think the town during this period, we could use that money to, uh, balance the budget. And if he needs money for a blighted building, then he can just come to us. I don't think it's necessary to leave that much money in that account. I think you really need to tighten this up a little bit more. That's my own opinion. There are some things here I think that probably we don't need to spend that much money on. I know Counselor Katrona said last, at the last meeting, that we really need to freeze all of our spending. And I have to agree with him. And I think it's time for us to take a look at freezing our spending this year because because of this emergency situation. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
I had a question, but I don't anymore. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to piggyback off of Counselor Marketti's comments. I did speak, last meeting, I speak again now on freezing monies until this pandemic passes, until we pass. We're going to have revenue shortfalls in the town. We can't keep raising taxes to the to the citizens and we can't keep putting this on their backs. My, in my opinion, and I I I speak to my fellow counselors, I feel strongly that we need to freeze any spending except for emergencies. If something comes up and it's urgent, obviously, we need to address it right away. Um, you know, we're going to have shortfalls. Uh, we're going to have possible revenue losses. We heard the town manager speak again tonight. It's my opinion that we need to take a better look at this account, at all these accounts again. Um, and and tighten things up even more. Um, it, we're, we're, we're looking at, um, struggling finances. And and I I I can't say it enough that we can't keep putting this on the on the taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's Ms. Hahnress?
Um, Chairman Jovan, if I could, there's just one item that I wanted to make, um, some additional comments on. It's the, um, library repairs improvements where it says nineteen thousand, six forty nine, sixty seven to close to stabilization. And I'm reading down and reviewing these. I would like to give just another look at this. I'm not sure if we borrowed that money or not. If this is an actual borrowing, it can't be close to the stabilization. We can only use it to spend on something that we could borrow for at the same, the same amount of time. So if we could just, I don't know if you're going to take a vote tonight or not, I would just like to put that piece of it on hold if you were going to vote.
Yeah, there was no intention to vote tonight. This was a discussion so that we can handle of where we're at on these capital and talk about some things. Um, I agree with the councils until we get a firm grasp on the, on the budget process about what what we're going to have. And we may be forced to close some of these out and the blighted buildings just to balance a budget or whatever we need to do. So it really was a conversation that's been ongoing that we wanted to have for some period of time. And now that it's budget season, that's why I was here. I just, uh, one of the things that I want to bring to the table is to relook at that, uh, the animal kennel. Uh, it is a project that needs to be done as the fire, as the police chief articulated last meeting that we had. Uh, we do have a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars already. We do have Bay Path committed to this project. I got a phone call from the superintendent of schools at Bay Path the day after our meeting. Wanted to know, hey, is the town council not doing this project? Uh, where are we? We have this in our schedule to be done. Uh, I've gotten no communication from the town of Southbridge. We got in from the town manager's office saying we weren't going to go forward with this. Uh, so the superintendent, uh, has, he put off his other project uh, to make sure that it is committed come the start of school in September. So they're not putting it off that project. It is in their pipeline. He has a new sup- there is a new superintendent of schools that will be starting in August, but he's trying to brief and make sure everything is ready for that transition. So if anything, uh, that's a project that we really have to look at. We know we have to get this project done. We cannot continue to have our animals go out to Oxford. For the meantime, uh, we're committed to this project. So I I think maybe in the next couple of meetings, we need to take a look at this and and see where that hundred thousand come. I would say take it out of blighted buildings. I agree with the councils. This is the problem that I have and going back, and I think I said it last year. When you look at projects that go back to FY thirteen and nothing's been done on it, I mean, that that just, that just sticks out. Uh, FY sixteen demolition of brick buildings. Then we have another demolition of buildings. Then we have another hundred and eighty thousand dollars as a special appropriation. And really, and I get this stuff in the pipeline, but to commit that kind of money, to have it just sit there, um, especially in in when we have major projects that need to be done. Um, I I I think we need to take a look at that hundred thousand. The other thing is the police chief came to us, uh, during his capital, six year capital plan and said, hey, next year I have to get new bulletproof vests that it's mandated that I have to replace these vests. So is it wise to close a line capital line item that we have for bulletproof vest if next year we're going to have to try to find money again to replace a safety equipment that's mandated? That that doesn't make good fiscal policy to me. If we already have the money line item out, it's committed to that specific program. Why would we close it out then to struggle next year to find it, to fund it again on that piece of safety equipment? That's just a couple of thoughts that I have. Uh, I think Ms. Clements had a question. Clements, you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you. Um, and my question is in regard to the two thousand dollars that's in the sign account. You talked about the signed project for the town and there was two thousand dollars in that account. In my opinion, that project isn't done. I am, every time I drive into Southbridge from Sturbridge, I am just completely disappointed. But it's not just me. It's other people who've made that same comment. A few weeks ago, as I drove past the water wastewater treatment plant, I came out of the road and noticed their sign, which is three times the size of the welcome to Southbridge sign, which is no longer welcome to Southbridge. I have the Commonwealth. Not quite sure when we lost the I have the Commonwealth. I remember the design, but I also remember the discussion about, you know, the eye of the Commonwealth. I would be asking that somebody could look into how much to get the sign bigger so that our welcome to Southbridge sign is befitting and respectful to this community. That is the littlest nothing sign on our major entrance that I've ever seen in any community. And it just saddens me. And I I know it's two thousand dollars. You can move to stabilization. It's a small amount. I don't think that project is done. I'm not sure what a sign would cost. I think you should reconsider, um, on that. Uh, and I'm just myself and others, I don't want to just keep saying I. It's been something that has bothered a number, um, for a while. So I'm requesting if they they would consider, um, if anyone would consider. I don't see, uh, Ms. Scrivens on this. I haven't seen her on the last few. Um, you know, if somebody would consider uh, that as a possibility and not put that money into stabilization and and rework that sign. Perhaps that that small sign, I don't think we have one coming in maybe from the Woodstock side. Not positive. Um, I know there's, they're coming in from the other entrances to town. That's befitting of, you know, a small back road. So that's, oh, look, my camera's not working. Uh, so I do, I'm asking that, uh, consideration out of respect for the community to have a much larger sign, something like the wastewater treatment sign, uh, which has the same design, but is just nice and respectful to our great community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll refer that over. Uh, Counselor Adams?
Just to answer Mrs. Clements's, uh, uh, question about from North Woodstock or Woodstock, yeah, there is a sign coming in to town. Thank you.
I was just referring to this road coming in from Lebanon, uh, Lebanon Hill. That direction.
Okay.
Well, it seems to.
Yeah, you said okay. All right, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you. And and, hey, I'm okay with reallocating their money towards other signs. I think what happened though is that when the, uh, economic development came, uh, economic development department came forward with signs, they actually gave a a very detailed breakdown as to the sign, the signs they were going to buy, the sizes and all that. So I think they purchased all the ones they told council they were purchasing. So if if council wants to relocate money for more signs, they can ask the economic development director to uh, propose how to spend that money. We can look at council, former council's climate requests. I'm not against doing it, but I think the purpose of closing is it met the specific instructions and and plan that they were going to do, uh, and they told council about. So I think, you know, we can change it if that's what the council wants to do.
Hey, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. So if there's an extra two thousand dollars in there, it, it, you know, I mean, I guess we could get Rosemary to, you know, put her input on what the cost is going to be, but it is actually not up to if Rosemary wants to do another sign or not. It's up to the town council if we want to do another sign or not. So I just wanted to get that clear. Thank you.
All right, uh, any other counselors? Counselor Nash, two other, Counselor Nash, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Uh, I loved absorbing what was stated here tonight. This is a great discussion. Uh, I know we'll have further discussions, as you've indicated. Uh, right off the bat, I'm glad that you, uh, Counselor Jovan pointed out bulletproof vests, that's nearly fifteen thousand dollars. It's a sizable amount of money, if I remember correctly. The police chief ended up indicating that, uh, some of that's either reimbursable or grant funded. So that's a very good positive. Going forward, the second thing I wanted to bring up, you've already addressed as well. And that's what I said last week, the, uh, animal control shelter, the kennel. A lot of good work's already gone into that. That project needs to keep coming forward. Um, I don't look at that just as a priority, but it's an obligation at this stage. We are going to run out of time if we don't find a way to fund it. Depending for the discussion right away, I can see that you have almost fifteen thousand dollars on page two, um, police facilities improvements, fourteen thousand, three fifty going into stabilization. And we have the two rail trail projects that amount to just over sixty thousand dollars if you exclude the amount that's going to fire departments waiting for cancer. So right away, we're over seventy thousand dollars that would be made available. We go back, revisit this with free cash distribution. They come up with that hundred and somewhat thousand dollars that we're looking for. So I hope counselors keep this in mind. Remember, it's not just about what we want to do. I'm okay with being fiscally conservative and exercising restraint, but we have obligations. Uh, when we look at what we really need to get done in this community, and I look at that animal control shelter as something that we can't wait much longer on. So I'll keep the rest for the next conversation, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Is there any further questions on this portion of it? I'm sure we're going to have another, uh, Ms. Hahnress?
If I could, just one last thing. Um, in order to move any of these funds to stabilization, and I know that we've talked about whether we would, whether we're going to transfer, we do, would need a vote of the council. So, um, I just need to know when we would want to bring this forward for a vote of the council.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll give you a call and we can discuss that, um, the timing on that. And, uh, I don't anticipate it being on May twenty eighth. I think that conversation has to be really the budget itself. Um, but I would anticipate first couple of weeks in June to really think at that point, maybe we'll have some further information from the state as far as what numbers are. Is there any additional aid that's going to come through? The Fed's going to do anything. And then we can, uh, make a well-balanced decision at that point. I think that would be my my recommendation. Do you agree with that, Karen?
Yeah, that sounds good. Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So Heather, if you want to go through your, I think the only ones that you had, uh, close to free cash was one on this sewer capital. And then, uh, if you want to just go through them real quick about what you have, but it's like a lot of this stuff is ongoing and projects that we have to complete. So go ahead.
Okay.
So we'll do the sewer first.
Yep, I'll just run through the sewer, um, sludge de-watering. You can see that was completed. Phosphorus remove, uh, removal sludge de-watering. That one would be closed. That portion is also completed. Um, sludgey watering. Uh, we are going to hold that open. As you know, we're designing, um, the conveyors. So we would like to make sure that we have that money available for when we go out to bid for the conveyor project in case we need additional funds. Um, part of the conveyor project is the walkways around the de-watering equipment were um, taken out of the contract because we didn't want to have to retrofit them afterwards to fit the new screw conveyors. So we held off on that.
screw conveyors. So we held off on that. Fosferous is complete. We still are ongoing I and I. Um we actually have a project, small project to do some work on Foster Street that will be coming out of there. Shots pump station. We're looking to combine that with some other money that we have for shots instead of having multiple accounts. What we have found is that, as you could see, we had four accounts. It got very cumbersome for us to track what money came out of what account. So by having one account, it will clean some up, some things up. We have multiple pump stations that need some engineering. Um that portable hookup might get some more higher priority. As you know, we've probably seen South Street, we have a portable generator out there right now. The lightning protection project is closed. Generator transfer switch is ongoing. That's the generator and electrical engineering portion. Bio tower. That was the original phase is complete. The um bio tower oversight and engineering, you know, I know that shows as a negative. Um that's because that's an SRF reimbursement. So that's how much we have spent to date, I believe. High pump station rehab. Um that's something that the operator is working on, trying to get some quotes in a scope of the, these are really large pumps that need to have their motors rebuilt and the pumps themselves we looked at. Um every once in a while, large pumps need to have some maintenance done on them. You have more I and I money, which we are, we have to keep I and I money dedicated. Um I was just about earlier and how much the I and I costs us just in electricity. In addition, it's part of our permit um to actually look at and try to combat I and I. We have a large I and I project going, study going on right now, and as a result of that study, we'll have additional work that needs to be done for our I and I. Headworks. Um in next in this year's budget, we have a major headworks project. So this money could be, will be coupled with that other headworks project so that we're not just doing um heating and ventilation. We're relooking at we engineering that whole building. Shots pump station. Electrical upgrades is the project that's ongoing with our new generator and our new panels that are being put in there, primary panels that are being put in there. Um that most of that money is already spent or encumbered. Um replacement of the affluent pump is is had been put on hold. It's an issue that we have that we have. The pipe itself has some, is disjointed in locations because of some large trees that have gone up there. Um but with everything else going on in sight, we couldn't have another contractor in there doing any work at that point. Repair concrete platforms is something we have a quote on. We're looking to potentially target that money this spring. Headworks is being put on hold to, that's the same idea. We, that floor does need to be done, but the money has already been allocated. We encumbered with that other larger project. The collection system TV, those quotes are getting, being gotten from state contracts and engineering for a large pump station rehab will be so that we can do some of those other works.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the sewer portion of this presentation?
Mr. McKenna?
Steve's, Council Steve's.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just one question. Well, the line item there talks about the affluent outfall that you've decided is not a priority. Um what 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 made you decide? I remember we talked about that some some time ago. What made you decide it wasn't a priority? And I was thinking if that if that's the case, maybe we should just take it back and then when it becomes a priority, we can fund it.
Well, it it it's I only have so much time and it's something that I think we can engineer in-house and do all the permitting and everything in-house, but it requires some time of mine to be freed up to concentrate on it. With the major electron, electrical upgrades going on, the sludge de-watering going on, the issues that we're still having around the bio tower. I and and the issues that we're having already in the headworks. Basically, I have to allocate my time where I see as being most valuable and balance that out with all the other needs that are going on, both in water, sewer, roads, drainage. Um so yes, I guess you could take it back. Six months from now, I might say, hey, I have a little bit of time here. We can get this project permitted and start going on it. Something we know we need to do. Uh if I, if priorities or I get a good window of something that I'm, I actually have some time, it would be something that we could probably get done and designed and out.
Is this something that would be affected by like the MS four permitting and that kind of stuff?
No. No, this is truly basically, there's a very large three-foot diameter pipe that's got a joint that's disjointed. It needs to have a notice of intent done and hire contractor and reset that pipe and put it back in place.
Okay, thanks.
Council McKenna?
Yeah, I was just was, I was curious what the shot pump station is.
Um that's the name of the pump station that is located over near Shots Fiber Optic. Um it's it's just, we call it the Shots Pump Station because of the location. It's one of our many pump stations.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on sewer? I'm sure we'll take that stuff, but another meeting, we'll discuss it. What we're gonna do, go ahead with water?
Sure. Okay, so first couple of projects we had to do with Dennison Hill Water Tank. Um those projects are complete. Um the FY sixteen hydrant and valve replacement, um that's ongoing. We replaced valves and hydrants that we are out of date. Some of our hydrants and valves are still over a hundred years old, so they go, the water department goes and buys the equipment and replaces them. Um check valve at Mass Ave tank. The work will be proceeding. We um kind of held off on doing this work because there was a lot of work going on on that, around that area and with the Mass Ave pump station itself. Um as you know, that has now been decommissioned and there's a new pump station. So now we'd be able to work on those check valves. The valves at the pump station is, we don't need those anymore. That's now gonna be closed. Lower Main Street water main replacement that will be used with the CBG funds when we do the West Street project. Um there's one part of that water main that needs to be replaced and coupling that with a major project will actually make the money go a lot further. The Kohasi um the Kohasi reservoir water pump replacement, um that's ongoing. We've kinda had bits and starts with that one back and forth, and I've spoke to the water department about it a few times. There was a little bit of misdirection from D P. Originally, we thought they, they, we thought they were requesting us to put two pumps in. They have come back and said, no, you can go with one pump. Um this is a large pump. It pumps the water from Kohasi reservoir over to our other reservoir so we can actually treat it. Um and it's a very old pump, so it's not extremely efficient. So we're looking to see if we can do some efficiency upgrades. The good thing is it's not used very often, but if we need it, we, it's very crucial that we have it as our backup reservoir. The reservoir flashware rehab is ongoing. Actually, there's uncovered money against this. You're just not seeing it yet. The bills are just starting to come in. Um the spillway um removal is the same thing. They've been out there doing a lot of work this spring to to clean the brush out of that spillway. So those bills will be coming in. The big one, and I think this is the one that Gus had asked about earlier, is the um phase two, the two hundred, the a hundred fifty thousand dollars. This was to extend um phase two of the water main that is up at the airport around the end of the airport. Um it didn't get us to, it got us basically to Pleasant Street, not down Pleasant Street. Um originally, this was based on an estimate of having the water department do that work. That's really no longer an option for us. The staff that we had at the time that had experience of doing more water main work um with installing water mains, not just small repairs. And the amount of work that's going on in the water department in other areas with inspections and stuff really doesn't allow us to do this work anymore um into that scope. So if we ever have to expand that water main, we'd be probably going out to bid for it. It would be much more costly than this. At the time when we were able to put that water main into the airport, we actually got a pretty, we did it very, very cost-effectively. But we have some concerns of just extending this extremely long leg, another two thousand feet without any usage. So at the time, until we can complete the loop to go down Pleasant Street and connect into the existing system, operationally, this would just cause operational problems. So we're not gonna do this project. Um South Street water main design, um as you know, that that has just been awarded. The tie-in body will be working on that. The water line with Charlton contamination, um the next two items are actually together. There's money that is shown there because the state money has already been, is put into an account. Um that's the first part. And the second part is the money that is Casella's money that matches it. So there's a difference of a million dollars there. Um if we needed additional money, right now it looks like once that project is closed out, we will not need additional money. It will not be, we won't use the full five million from the state, and we probably will not need to take an additional loan out, which is good news. Uh right now, just a little status on that project with the whole epidemic and COVID going on, the pandemic, the Town of Charlton Board of Health, who was kind of in charge of overseeing the well closure and had to do the well closure permits, and the Town of Charlton has asked that there no work be done out there until things settle down. So I think with the latest governor um phasing opening, we should be able to see work starting up up there in the next couple of weeks, which will allow us to start finishing out that project. We are about ninety percent done. It's the well to be um hatchet pond dam repairs that is in engineering. I just reviewed the bid plans for that, so that will be going out to bid very soon. And the water main improvements. We, we have a spec for some water lanes that need to be cleaned in line. Um it just needs some additional time for Matt and I to finalize that specification and get that out to bid. Main Street valve replacement. Um you are aware that we are proceeding with that project. That is now going to actually be a redesign of the whole Main Street water line and a replacement. So additional money will be coming out of next year's budget for that. But that, this money will also go towards that. And then we have the small cybersecurity upgrades, which they just started the second phase.
Okay, questions to Heather, or Karen, Council Trina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Uh thank you, Heather, for the explanation. How many of these projects are emergencies and how many are nice to haves? I know you're gonna say everything probably, but.
Well, um it's important for some of these projects to continue on um or because they're already started. And it's important to keep both our water and our sewer infrastructure doing the updates on a regular basis so that we can space out the costs of what we're seeing as uh as the customers. When you wait and defer maintenance until the end, you actually pay a lot more. So we have a major, major infrastructure in here to invest in, and you're making an investment in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Council Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Uh I have to agree with Ms. Blakely. When you're, you keep up on your things, you're actually, you are saving a lot of money. We we can't um fall behind on on stuff like that. And we, we fell far behind on other things before in the past, and it's cost us more. So I'm in complete agreement with Ms. Blakely. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh question for Karen. Uh Karen, is this money goes to regular stabilization, not water stabilization, or is it water stabilization?
That's correct. It would go to water stabilization.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on the Council Nash? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Uh while we have Karen active on the line, I wanted to ask if maybe she could clarify. Would it make sense perhaps to at least consider making some of these? I think there are only four items. Uh at least for distinction purposes in the future here, available to go into return to any retained earnings or free cash for that. If it went to retained earnings, would it have to be recertified? How would that work? Would it just be a transfer?
If um and you're talking about the ones that are in the water, correct? The ones that are in the water, but yes. Um when they go to stabilization, um then it would need two-thirds to come back out. If it closes free cash, then it would need to be recertified. But what we want to be careful of here with the water is we also have the IMA with the Town of Charlton. So if we put it back in retained earnings, have it recertified, then we'd have to give Charlton a piece of it again, and we really don't want to do that. That makes sense to you?
No, I I definitely follow on that and I perhaps might try to thought and rationale is a little skewed here at nine thirty. But um where I'd rather look in this particular realm is yes, we need to keep reinvesting in our infrastructure. Everybody's heard me say that. I'm with uh Council Amanda and others on this, including the DPW director. But I'd also like to thank that if we're gonna take two hundred and twenty thousand dollars instead of putting it in stabilization for uh the water enterprise account, we're already over a million dollars, if I remember correctly, or pretty, pretty darn close, which is what we target. I'd rather see that money put back in somewhere where maybe we can take another look uh when it's time for water and sewer rate assessment. So uh I'd just like to at least keep that on the table for discussion going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other questions? Council McKenna?
Could you just clarify this water Charlton contamination issue? I mean, it's, Casella's paying about seven hundred thousand for this, and the town is putting in a million, seven hundred thousand for this? Just clarify it for me, that's all.
The um the agreement is oh, okay. So the agreement actually is, sorry, the agreement actually is the five million came from the State of Massachusetts. They gave the town five million dollars to manage for part of the ACO. So and then the other money is five million, up to five million is coming from Casella, which we agreed that we would take a loan and Casella would pay us a certain amount over twenty years. So the money, none of the money is coming from the actually any of the of the town or any rate payers for the water system. It's just managed through the water account and shown as a debt on the water system. But none of the money is actually coming from the town or any of the water rate holders.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we have some areas that we take a look at. And uh I'll talk to Karen about setting up another meeting that we can specifically discuss these closed-out accounts and the manager can take a look at some of the other accounts, some of the feedback that we gave relative to the dog kennel, uh the bulletproof vests, the trustees accounts, um and see where we can come back uh when we talk about and how we can balance some of these that we may be able to close out when we talk about free cash as well. So without any opposition, everybody good with that? Any questions, any further dialogue you want to have on that? We good on that plan? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the update on all this and definitely some more work as we get through this difficult budget season. Had it not been for COVID nineteen, we'd probably be in pretty good shape to put some money back into stabilization and continue with some projects, but it is what it is. Okay, moving on. These next items came uh towards the end of the week last week. I apologize because originally we had thought we would only have a few items to move uh agenda and then the capital, but these are items that needed to get done before our next meeting on June eighth. So item eighteen, votes authorize the town manager to sign the Green Communities Grant Contract Extension to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to pay for heating systems, zone control systems for town hall. Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Yeah, I have a motion from Council Trina, taken by Council Daniel and Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, you have a memorandum on this particular issue. Really, this is just delaying, uh giving us an extension somewhere time to finish the planned work.
uh, for the boiler and the heating control systems within the town hall. I guess the original plan for the, uh, pneumatic zone controls didn't work out and Heather worked with them to develop a new plan for how to get that work done. So this just allows us more time to get that project completed. I don't know if Heather needs to add anything to that, but that's the general sense of what's going on.
Heather, anything to add?
No, good.
Any questions, discussion? Say none, roll call. Mary, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Mana?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
And Council Katrona?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item nineteen, vote to authorize the town manager to enter into contract with Precise Paving Incorporated for one hundred and thirty six thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars to complete the Central Street Parking Lot Phase Four Hamilton Alley. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second. Council Katrona, second by Council Daniel, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the ongoing Central Street project for what is the final phase, the paving work. Uh, to complete that final phase, the contract is before you just authorized me to sign it. And, uh, if you have any questions, I'll refer you to Peg Dean is on this call to answer any specific questions on this project.
Anyone? I know we've talked about this pretty in depth in other council meetings, so. Roll call.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Mana?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
No.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
And Council Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty, vote to ratify change order number four, Nunes Phase Two Contract Representing a Decrease of one thousand four hundred sixty two dollars and twenty five cents, bringing the contract total down to two hundred eighty three thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars and sixty two cents. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Council Toronto, second by Council Daniel, uh, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the Central Street Parking Lot. As you guys are all aware, you have change orders that go positive and negative at the end of a specific part of a project. This one is in our favor. The chain order, the change order, uh, actually lowers the cost of the project by one thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars and twenty five cents. The packet gives you the information of the pluses and minuses. Uh, this is positive to get this section of the contract done and effectively slightly under budget. And again, uh, our economic development directors, the CDBG directors, uh, on the line if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Council Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. So it, it's just, uh, you know, what, what can, where will that fourteen hundred dollars go to?
Peg?
Mr. Chair, yeah. Hi, good evening.
Yeah.
Ron, would you like me to address it?
All right, Peg.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, I had a little bit of a soliloquy prepared for the approval of the Phase Four. This would have kind of addressed it. So everything is sort of, uh, in flux as we lock in all these last numbers. So what's happening is you're seeing, and you saw a total increase on Phase Two, an overall decrease on Phase Three. You're buying the last of your item. For instance, the, the planters were still purchasing. Um, we're, uh, coming into the final stretch where we'll know what's exactly available. And so we may have up to a hundred twenty two thousand dollars, uh, excuse me, we'll have up to, yeah, a hundred twenty two thousand dollars before we have to use miscellaneous income, for instance. Um, but we won't know these numbers until, again, we're done with the, the last of these Phase Two, Phase Three. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
I guess. Any other questions?
And I actually, I, may I also correct myself on, yes, uh, when you were talking about the hundred ninety five thousand dollar uh, free cash article that shows up in the, the capital outlay? That, I apologize, I didn't have my spreadsheet in front of me. We've actually encumbered in that, uh, twenty one thousand dollars. So that's why I said we had four thousand dollars remaining. So that too, you know, um, may go back to the town. Um, and again, we won't know until the last of these projects are done.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, say none, roll call.
Council Mana?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
abstain.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
And Council Jovan?
Yes.
Item twenty one, votes are ratified, change order number one, Nunes Phase Three Contract Representing a Decrease of eleven thousand three hundred dollars, bringing the contract down from one hundred twenty three thousand six forty three to one hundred and twelve thousand three forty three. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
I've got Council Katrona. Motion, Council Daniel, second. Uh, Peg, I guess, do you want to?
Um, the May four meeting, uh, I had preemptively, uh, given you a heads up that this was going to be coming our way. Uh, I was preparing you because we were asking for an increase in the Phase Two, but we knew that the overall total of the Phase Two, Phase Three was going to be a deduction. And so at this point, it's looking at about, uh, a five thousand dollar savings overall.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And questions? Say none, roll call.
Council Marketti?
abstain.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
And Council Mana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Twenty-two votes ratified the DHCD Community Development Block Grant FY two thousand eighteen Contract Amendment to Increase the Total Contract by one thousand nine hundred dollars using available program income to pay the legal expense of review on the DHCD boilerplate contracts. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Council Toronto, again, second by Council Daniel. Uh, Peg, I guess, first you want to explain this and then we'll go to Council Steve's.
Sure, just, uh, two important definitions because they've come up. So miscellaneous income is when you have deferred payment loans that come in the door after five years from the time that the state administratively closes a grant. And so when they walk in the door, the, when that money comes in the door, it goes to the town. That's why we have the seventy five thousand dollars that we've been discussing is available. Program income differently, if it comes in prior to, uh, the state closing the grant, uh, five years prior to them, excuse me, within the five years of them, um, closing the grant. So it hasn't reached the five-year window, I'm sorry. And, uh, we have it in our coffers. We have to ask DHCD every time we spend the money and we have to go through a formal amendment process to then spend it. And then we have to attach it to a, any of the contract year that we're spending it within. So this one, we had these, uh, con, we had this boilerplate contract we thought would be a good use of using the program income funds to review the contracts. Uh, again, we have fifty five hundred dollars left in program income. We've been trying to spend it down at DHCD's direction. Uh, and so then, once we spend this down, we'll have approximately four thousand dollars remaining, which in our grant application we'd initially proposed could go towards things like training and education for new staff like myself or Wendy, but I thought this was a better use.
Okay, Council Steve's?
Um, yeah, it immediately jumped out to me as questions, why would we need to use, um, any legal, any funds to review a DHCD boilerplate contract? It's a contract, we're using the same contracts with them pretty much forever.
When, yeah, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, we had that monitoring, if you'll remember, last fall. It was the monitoring of the fiscal year seventeen. And when they were in our files, they, they noted that we're using an outdated uh, contract. They asked us to adopt their, their newest or their newer of the contracts. I was attending procurement training in the fall, at which time they also said, when you're using our contracts, you should run them through your local town uh, attorneys to make sure that they're meeting your needs.
Very good. Any further? Anything further? Council Adams?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Peg for all the hard work she's doing under this, uh, this, uh, undertaking, uh, over a three, four-year fiscal year CPG funds. And, uh, so I'll let you know that the, the parking lot is looking, uh, really good. Thank you very much for all your hard work and staying professional. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, my, may I make one last comment?
Yes.
Um, my birthday was Friday and as my birthday gift, the site furnishings came into the DPW yard. They've been delivered and they're under the hangar dry, waiting to be installed. So I'm pretty excited.
Well, outstanding and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Council Manna?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have to echo what Council Adam says. It does look really nice down there and, uh, can't wait till the furnishings go in and uh, I know, uh, that empty lot in between has been cleaned up. So that whole area is done to look, uh, really nice and hopefully we can get some more redevelopment in that area. Uh, when things open and back up.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Say none, roll call.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Mana?
Yes.
And Council Marketti?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, Peg. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
It's just the keeping of pets by law. Hopefully we can get that resolved, uh, pretty soon. Um, would require entire reading. And I don't know if we want to spend two hours reading it, well, what or reading that, but we'll get that wrapped up soon. Uh, Councilors Forum, I'll start with Council Steve's, Council Steve's. Since this is the first meeting, I think that you actually, uh, video and, uh, not through chat. So we'll actually get to hear you on the Councilors Forum. So.
I don't have anything this time, but thank you.
Wow. Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, just like to remind the citizens, um, of the community, when you're wearing a mask, now please be sure and cover your entire face, cover your nose, cover your mouth. I see a lot of people just um, taking them off their nose, um, especially when they're in supermarkets and, uh, some of the, some of, some of the local stores. Um, it's important that you protect yourself as well as, uh, others in the community. Couple of other things, um, the, I was in town hall today to pick up my, to pick up a packet. Uh, I noticed all the signs on, on the door. I don't know if that's really necessary, but, um, uh, it looks very messy and it gives, just gives the appearance, um, that, that the town is messy. There's at least seven or eight signs and you have to try and read each one. Uh, so I'm not sure if that's something that can be addressed as well. And one other thing to, to go back on, again, uh, that I didn't mention earlier, the Board of Health, the code of regulations, the town manager stated um, earlier that he was, he was just handed a memo to, to read. Uh, and he, I saw him shaking his head that he was agreeing with, um, with past counselor and, and counselors as they spoke, that, uh, the timing was bad on this and, and possibly should not have been put forward. Well, Mr. Town Manager, you're the town manager, you're the boss, you're running town hall. Um, I, 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 I understand it's a board of health, but you certainly have the memo to speak up to prior to the meeting. And, uh, I just think that's something that, and it doesn't require a comment that should have been filled with before this meeting. That's all I have. Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you. Council Marketti?
Um, I don't really have a lot tonight. Just, uh, everybody stay safe and stay healthy and wear your mask. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. Um, I just want to touch upon something that Council Katrona had brought up earlier in the beginning. And that's, um, and I've been thinking about this for a while now too, is having, um, the, going back to the town hall and having in-person meetings. Um, we can remain a safe distance, six feet apart. Um, Big Y gets it right. I'm sure Big Bunny gets it right. CVS gets it right. Walgreens gets it right. Um, I'm sure we at the town hall could get it right. And I also, um, I, I also believe that, um, we can open the town, the town hall, the town hall should be open for business. Like I said, Big Y gets it right, CBS gets it right, all the stores get it right. You mark your spots, you know? And, uh, uh, you, you put up the plexiglass and, and stuff. There, there's just, there's no, there's no link for it. And just because other towns are doing it, doesn't mean that South Bridge has to do it. Um, I think, um, I, I think we, we need to try to start getting back to normal. I know we have to follow the state guidelines, but I think, um, because we're in a central business, you know, I think we should um, try to get back doing business. Um, that's, that's it. I'm pretty excited about the big event because, you know, I'm tired of one, working from home. I don't like working from home. I'd rather be in an office. Two, I want to see the small businesses actually open up their businesses again. Um, hopefully they can, you know, um, get through this mess. Um, I want to see, you know, kids playing at playgrounds. I, I want to see you know, people outside enjoying themselves. I want to be able to go to a movie if I want, go out to eat, you know? I'm just tired. I'm old. I can't, can't, can't. I'm an adult. I know how to take care of myself. I know how to be safe from other people. And, um, I think we all are, you know, we all know how to do that. So, um, I guess I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is a follow-up to Council Manna and Council Katrona's point. You I understand your points. We have an emergency operation at Center meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, we will discuss it at that point. I did get a message from Mr. Philbrook, who serves as the health agent for the Town of Charlton. Um, he stated that he does have information that he'll forward over to me tomorrow morning uh, relative to town hall closing, stating that, uh, it is a requirement that they do stay closed. So whatever information that he forwards is to me. Um, I will get that out to the council as soon as I get that information from the health agent from Charlton. So, and if, if that is the case, we will follow the guidelines. If we can change something, we will change it. Uh, because I certainly would like to get, uh, in a public forum as best we can. So we'll go from there. Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, just to kind of follow up on that, and, and I absolutely agree with you, agree with Mr. Philbrook. The MMA, one of the things that the MMA is requesting from the governor is timely notice of when municipalities can open again. Uh, so there's a list, if you want to, MMA website, uh, they have put together the kind of information they want the governor's office to present to all municipalities so we can make those decisions. And, and one of the things that, um, where, you know, the town managers across the state are uncomfortable with this is not getting, and, and if you listen to governor's address, there was almost nothing on municipalities. So we'd like to be more kept into the loop about what happens to municipal government, the timing of it. And also, we're looking for a lot of guidelines from the state. Um, if you looked at some of the phases, it says that you can open up the parks and playgrounds and things. And I think it's on Phase Three, if I remember correctly, uh, with guidelines, but we haven't seen those guidelines yet. So we're really looking forward to getting the state's advice as to how we operate some of those facilities that are very public facing. Uh, we do know that the senior centers are going to be in the very last phase because of the nature of the risk to seniors. Um, but when I get that information from the state and that I'd be more than happy to provide it to counselors, I just, we haven't gotten any of that information yet. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, interesting meeting once again. First, um, I'll just, uh, announce for you, uh, to you that I'll be excusing myself from, uh, the remainder of the meeting. Um, I'll go back for a minute. I think that it might, uh, be a nice agenda item in the future to talk about the trash issues. Um, I know Counselor Adams mentioned earlier that he was a member of the Board of Health that Councilor Adams mentioned earlier that he was a member of the Board of Health that promulgated the regulations that are on the town webpage. I think it was near the end of 2017. I remember those pretty clearly because advocated that people needed to step up and give it a two cents and weigh in like I did. I also seem to think that, when you look at the memo that was included in our packet, I don't want to point fingers, but play on words, an enhanced enforcement date, that's a little bit creative. I'd love to see some history, and I request it through the town manager, if the health department has indeed enforced the 64-gallon limit. Want to maybe take that into account when you make any sort of assumptions when it comes to the Board of Health or the health department? Show us the data, and I'll leave it at that. Councilor Catrona made a great statement. I picked up a packet in the town hall today as well, and if we were a local commercial business, I think we'd be in violation of the sign bylaw. You know, that back door at the ramp was at least 50% covered in signs, if not 60%, which I think was a threshold. It's a little bit much, so I agree with you, Councilor Catrona. Thank you for mentioning it. I took a picture of it. I intended to share it with everybody, but I couldn't think of it. Another quick thing is, I know that Councilor Daniel mentioned there was no report on the town manager search committee, but it would be nice to know if indeed the vendor has put his posting or put their posting out there, and if that listing is now active. I have to imagine that it is. At the very least, we've got to be moving forward that. It's just nice to hear it. Lastly, I'll make a recommendation for any counselor here that hasn't sat in on one of the seminars. If and when it comes up again, it would be at least my recommendation, get educated on the grant assurances from the Federal Aviation Administration, Mass Department of Transportation, et cetera. There's a lot of folks, they or may not know what they're voting on when it comes to these grants to the airport. I remember being very awestruck when I sat in on a meeting, and I seem to think that Clemens suggested that it was a good meeting, and I went to it, and you would be absolutely baffled if you sit in one of these meetings and realize what we're actually committing to when we accept grants, the long-term impacts of any sort of changes we make to that airport, shutting it down, we have to repay grant monies. It's just absolutely astounding. So I'm reminded of that because when you looked at the paperwork on that agenda item tonight, there was a slight mention of grant assurances. It was very, very interesting, and I'll leave it to every individual counselor to consider that, or maybe to ask Mr. Clemens, Rick Clemens, or I bet you Denise even knows. She's very well-educated on these matters. So please keep those things in mind, and otherwise, bid you all farewell this evening, and I look forward to our next meeting. Forty-three days for me, and I'm looking forward to concluding my term. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you do depart, Councilor Nash, the posting did go out immediately the day after our meeting, and it was posted. So we're just going on that. So it did go, it did go out, and it's been posted in the Beacon, and I know it's on their website as well. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I just wanted to thank DPW for all the landscaping they've been doing around the downtown area, and the flags, and getting all the, they're looking pretty nice for Memorial Day weekend. Hopefully, we can maintain that throughout the rest of the year. Memorial Day, I know you mentioned it, Mr. Chair, about this. I just wanted to throw this out there. Nine o'clock, nine o'clock on Friday at the New Notre Dame on North Woodstock Road is where we're going to meet the Veterans Service Officer, place flags at the three cemeteries, Moore's, St. Hedwig's, and the New Notre Dame Cemetery. And this coming Saturday, nine o'clock, meeting at Oak Ridge, where we'll do the same planting flags, placing flags over there on the cemeteries, or at the cemeteries. And we also, between Saturday and Monday morning, we'll be planting, placing wreaths at the monuments throughout the town. Change some things up. I want to thank Kathy Griner over at Community Center Mills on Wheels for redeveloping and cleaning up the old wreaths and rebuilding them to be brand-new. So I want to thank her for spending all the time, and we're doing a little thing, few things different, obviously, for this year, especially going into the following year. There'll be quite a few things that'll be changing. Lastly, instead of, obviously, the parade, parade's been canceled. I posted that on social media. I know we've been passing the word for quite some time. We will do a short and small ceremony. I've been looking over the governor's orders about how many people could be in the area. So what we've decided to do was to keep within the honor roll itself, area, obviously, there's going to be less than 10 individuals. We're going to be pre-staging the poppies. Normally, every year, we will, they will read off the names of those upage veterans who passed away this past year. Those poppies will be pre-staged, and just the names will be read off. There'll be two speakers. One will be Mike Trumbly, the former Veterans Service Officer, and the other will be Keith Roberts, the new Veterans Service Officer. They're going to keep their speeches short and sweet. We will have a fire detail from the Police Department that will be at the top, the dresser park. And then we will also have an honor guard from the Fire Department that'll be off to the side away from the honor roll. Music will be played through Bluetooth, through a Bose system, through my phone. Hopefully, that works out well. They also have cable access coming in to videotape this. We'll be taking pictures throughout the weekend of the volunteers. And that will go at nine o'clock as well. We do ask the public to refrain from congregating down that area, just out of, obviously, out of respect for the state guidelines that are now, that are continuing to be in place. But we will do our best to maintain our distance throughout, and obviously, wearing face masks or cloth. I will, just to go back, the cemetery is a flag schedule. If anybody can come on down there, we're going to have the flags pre-staged, or we'll have the flags pre-staged, ready to go. That way, we stay away from each other and properly place the flags in the proper areas. And recordings, I asked the town manager last time we had a meeting about the recordings. Do you have any update on that? From the, from the recordings that we're doing remotely?
No, no, I do not have an update at this time. I'll get back to you shortly though, Councilor Adams.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. That's all I have, unless there's any questions on the ceremony. Mr. Chair? Jack, you're still muted. Sorry, I have monitors going too, so I could have other, other things up. Councilor Adams, just to let you know, Mr. Philbrook also gave me a message saying that, let you know that he has 50 patriotic handmade cloth masks for Memorial Day to hand out to veterans for Memorial Day. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll send him a text. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll give him a call tomorrow. He'll find it. So we thank him for that. Okay, I think I got every council except Councilor Daniel's last, am I correct? I didn't miss anybody else? Okay, Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I'd like to give a thank you to Superintendent LaFlesh up at Bay Path for his newsletter stating that he's taking some measures to mitigate the potential consequences of the probable shortfalls in the budget. It's nice to see that he's thinking ahead and helping out as a member of town, so I just want to give him a note of thanks to him and, and to his crew. And in a similar vein, also to Superintendent Vila, who's made some adjustments as well that he discussed earlier. I failed to mention it then, but I will mention it now. Both superintendents of the schools that service our kids have made some changes for us and for our budgets, and it's nice to hear that they're thinking of that. On a different note, in terms of the superintendent search, resumes are due June 8th to the search firm.
Is that Town Manager?
The Town Manager search, yes.
Not superintendent, right?
No.
Oh, my God, no. Not superintendent, Town Manager search. They're due June 8th, and that's why we're having our meeting on June 11th. And with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is Thursday, May 28th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, and that's a remote meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And just if I could just add real quick, you had big comments about both Superintendent Vila and Superintendent LaFlesh. I've had the opportunity to have conversations with them about graduation for this year, and they're both trying to make plans to have some kind of graduation celebration for the students. And they're trying to think of creative ways to make sure that those students are recognized. So I look forward to working with them to try to get that accomplished. So with that, next item is vote to go into executive session according to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant made requirements, specifically the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 22F, G, the review of executive session minutes. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second? Roll call?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So with all due respect, shouldn't this just wait until we can meet in person so we can discuss it?
Unfortunately, we cannot, because a person has, a council has made a request for a copy of these minutes. In order to have a copy of the minutes approved, we have 10 days to approve those minutes and take a vote as to whether we release them or not. So in order to comply with the requirements of the open meeting law, we have to go this way. So I respectfully understand your position. However, as you know, with the open meeting law, there are certain requirements that we must follow.
So I guess my next question is then, so are we going to stop the recording while we're?
I am going to follow, yeah, we're going to follow every requirement that we possibly can, to make sure that we adhere to locking in the meeting so nobody else can jump back on, and making sure the appropriate parties are there.
Okay.
So, yes. Okay, Mr. Town Manager? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I'd be happy to stay. Do you want me to stay for this?
I know, I'm just going to take a minute.
Just racing minutes, but I'd be happy to stay if you want me.
No, we're all set. Thank you.
You don't need me? All right. Well, I just want to thank you. Okay, I want to thank everybody for their work tonight. I appreciate you guys. Have a wonderful night.
Have a good night. Take a roll call.
Wait a minute, we still have one person.
A roll call to go into executive session has.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Catrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Okay, and for?
Yes.
And for the record, town council will adjourn directly from executive session and will not convene an open session. Okay, thank you. Have a good night.